Hold on, that was more, okay, there we go. Good evening. This public hearing of the Judson Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 6:00 PM. I am very pleased that you have taken the time to join us this evening. I extend to each of you a sincere welcome from the entire school board. Thank you for your interest in Judson ISD. We have established a quorum and I will call roll. Okay, all seven board members are present. All right, Ms. Betty, any comments for the public hearing portion? No? Okay, then we will proceed. Dr. Fields, you guys can present the budget hearing.
Yes ma'am. As the board knows, tonight is our hearing for the proposed budget for '25-'26. At this time, I'd ask for our finance team to come up and go over their proposed budget, which we'll vote on later in the meeting, and take us through the timeline of how we got here and what they recommend for next year. So, Mr. Geta?
All right, thank you, Dr. Fields, Ms. Ryan, and the rest of the board. As you know, this is our annual presentation for the budget adoption later this evening. Just to give a budget timeline, again, to be more transparent with the board this year, we started in early November with our first budget workshop. We start, we did another one in January. As you know, this is a little early for us, but we wanted to make sure we were as transparent with the board as possible, especially with the deficit budgets we've had the last few years. We wanted to make sure that we were as open with the board as we possibly could. We had another budget workshop in April where we presented some preliminary numbers, and in May, we started to do the budget workshop again where we got a little more drilled down. And on the 20th of May, we started looking at cost reductions for the board, as you were directing us to try to cut costs based on the April presentation. June, we had our sixth budget workshop, and we had a special call meeting where we, you know, we adopted the financial consultant with the board that we've been working with the last couple of weeks, and we're here tonight to hopefully adopt the budget. But as you can see, when we first started out with the first major budget presentation in April, you can see we had about a $47 million deficit budget that we presented to the board, and just through working through things and looking at the reductions and the staff adjustments that we've been talking about the last couple of months, we've been able to reduce the budget from $47 million to about $37 million. Again, we've been looking at revenues, but I'm going to expenditure, see where we can save, see where we can save on staffing and personnel, and the budget is now around a $37 million deficit based on our budgetary practices. If there's any questions on any of this part before I go through, then I'll take them at this time. You can see, we've reduced about $8.7 million since April in expenditures, and based on the enrollment trends at the very end, on the six-six weeks, you can see the ADA went up a little bit, which is increasing our revenue just a bit as well. Okay, so these, as you know, as a board, y'all are legally obligated to adopt three different budgets for us. You adopt the general fund budget, which is the first one on the far left. We highlighted the three you adopted in yellow. The child nutrition fund is the second federal fund that y'all do adopt legally, and the debt service fund, which is how we make our bond payments, is the third fund that y'all adopt as a board. So you can see, the total revenues we're expecting, and what we did is we went ahead and adopted the budget that we're presenting for adoption this evening is based on current law, even though House Bill law just passed as well, but we didn't include any of those additional funds yet, as we wanted, we didn't include any of the possible waiver that we want to, we want to ask the board to pursue later on as well. But we did give you a couple of scenarios in the next two columns. If we leave the tax rate the same, how much more revenue that would generate? And if we ask for all the additional eight and a half cents that were allowed by law, you can see what it'd be in that third column. So you can see that $37 million in the first budget, you can see $37 million deficit. We know the HB2 funding is going to be around $5.7 million, maybe increase a little as well. In talking with the board today, we talked about the shortfall that we were having in our self-funded insurance, and we predict it might be around $4.8 million, but still it's a possibility. It could be zero, it could be half, it could be whatever, but we tried to put a conservative number there at 4.8. So that would reduce the deficit to about $36 million, and based on what we think our fund balance will be at $80 million, you can see with a $36 million deficit, it will put our fund balance around $44 million.
Mr. Geta?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure the audience knows, you can ask questions during this portion.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. So the child nutrition fund, you can see it has a deficit budget, but again, that's strategic because we're only allowed so many fund balance, so much in our fund balance by law, so we have a spend-down plan to make sure we stay within that criteria. The debt service, we have, we're producing, we're proposing a balanced budget. Again, we've been able to do some deficiences and refundings that allow us to keep the tax rate low on the INS side, which still allows us to have a balanced budget making our payment as well. If there's any questions on this, I'll take them from the board.
That's the last slide, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, no. My only question was the child nutrition spend-down, that's what I thought it was. So, additional questions from the trustees?
I have questions later, but don't we have our own presentation?
Yes.
So this is for the audience to ask, right? I didn't want to take their time.
Correct, or trust, it's a public hearing, so anyone can ask questions.
Because I was going to hold mine.
Okay, you can hold yours. Still the agenda item if you choose.
Okay.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, hearing none. This will adjourn the public hearing at, oops, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see a hand. Sorry, Mr. Willis. Why, could, so we pick up the audio, would you, Mr. Willis, the audio's not going to pick you up, so would you mind moving over to a microphone? Thank you, sir.
My question to our CFO here is, with the difference in how much you're expecting to come up with out of the, for insurance, your payout for that, you said $4.8 million, how much are you going to try to offset? What can the teachers expect and employees hear about changes in insurance premiums because of this? Is that part of that?
Yes, sir, the $4.8 million is an estimate based on our advisors as well, where we think the shortfall will be for their self-funded insurance that we have as a district. We are in the middle of negotiations and looking at going fully funded, so once we have some, some numbers for the, for the, for the board and for the cabinet, then we'll present those to see what they'll be. We're trying to keep the insurance premiums and rates as close as we can to what they are currently, but as you know, we're taking these massive hits to the budget, having to cover it, there is some stuff that we have to prepare for. So again, we're trying our best to keep the rates as close as we can, and as soon as we have some solid numbers, we will give them to the board and to the, to the cabinet, to the Dr. Fields as well.
I think what Mr. Willis was trying to say is that if we were to stay with the self-funded insurance, then how much would we increase the premiums to make up for these shortfalls? I think it's important to note that our plan is not to stay with self-funded insurance, it's to go to fully funded, and then we're just going to try and keep the payments as close as what they are now. I'm sure it might not be, but we're going to try.
And that does not take effect, we're on a calendar year for medical insurance opt-in, so that would start January 1st of 2026.
Correct.
Do you know when we, when you plan on presenting that to the board? Is that going to come in July, do we think?
Yes, it'll be next month.
Okay, all right, that's great, so that our staff has six months to, you know, plan their budget for January 1st and look at what their options are.
And we start open enrollment in October, just like everybody else.
Okay, okay, and that'll give them some time to look at what their, what their options are.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Okay, any additional questions? Seeing none, we will adjourn this public hearing at 6:09 PM. Then we are going to roll right into, hold on, let me flip scripts here. All right, this regular meeting of the Judson Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 6:10 PM. I am very pleased that you have taken the time to join us this evening. As the Judson Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals and policies and oversee the management of the district. We are responsible for approving budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and to listen to reports from the superintendent. We are not here to make administrative or management decisions pertaining to the daily operations of the district, this is the responsibility of the superintendent. In compliance with the state government code on open meetings, tonight's agenda has been appropriately posted. This is a meeting in public, not a meeting of the public. As our guest, you are welcome to observe and listen. These proceedings are being video and audio recorded and will become part of Judson's permanent legal record. In order that the tape adequately reflects these proceedings, please silence your mobile devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings are recorded accurately, I may have to ask for order periodically should I notice that disruptions are interfering with our recording capabilities. Once again, I extend to each of you a sincere welcome from the entire Judson School Board. Thank you for your interest in Judson ISD. We have established a quorum and I will call roll for the regular meeting. Okay, you can go ahead and mark your attendance. Okay, all seven board members are present. Dr. Fields, would you mind leading us in the invocation?
Oh, I'd love to. If we could all please stand, bow your heads. Dear only father, we come to you this evening saying thank you for another opportunity to do what's right for the community of Judson ISD and for the students of Judson ISD. I would ask that we all be on one accord, that you speak to us during this meeting and we get through the meeting without any issues, without any concerns. And I thank you once again for the ability to do what's best for the community and the students of Judson ISD. All these things, we ask and pray in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Please remain standing for our pledges. We are very excited to introduce our two pledge leaders this evening, Erin Ryan and Michael Potte. Erin will be a 7th grader at JSTEM this fall. She is an all-A honor roll student who is a member of the National Junior Honor Society Student Council, the JSTEM Robotics Team, and JSTEM UIL Math Competition Team. In her free time, she plays indoor and outdoor competitive soccer for the Arsenal Football Club and enjoys art, painting, and traveling. Michael Potte will be a 3rd grader at Crestview Elementary this year. He is an A honor roll student, a member of the chess club, and is learning to play marimba with Ms. Anderson at Miller's Point. Outside of school, he loves to play basketball, swim, and collect Pokemon cards with his friends. Thank you for leading us in the pledges.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. And if you, pledge leaders, please stay up here for a picture with the board. And if we get a round of applause for our pledge leaders, thank you so much.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is the time that citizens, staff, or students to provide comments to the board. A meeting that is open to the public under the Act is one that is, that the public is entitled to attend. However, the Act does not give the public a right to speak at such meetings, except to address their grievances through the proper channels. As a courtesy to the public, Judson Independent School District Board of Trustees allows time for public comment. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during other portions of this meeting, so please sign up for public audience if you have comments to present. To have your comments heard tonight, your name and the topic of your comments must be written on the sign-in sheet prior to the start of the meeting, which is located in the rear of the meeting room. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to complete his or her comments. As the presiding officer, I will strictly enforce the time limit. Also, profanity, yelling, inappropriate, uncivil, or discriminatory comments will not be permitted. In accordance with Judson ISD Board policy, BED Local, in the event that your comment, in my judgment as the presiding officer, constitutes a complaint or charge against an employee or officer, it will be necessary for me to interrupt you, ask you to stop, and direct you to seek resolution of your complaint through the district's appropriate formal grievance policy. DGBA for employee complaints, FNG for student or parent complaints, or GF for public complaints. By law, the Judson Independent School Board, School District Board of Trustees cannot lawfully discuss, deliberate, or make comments or make a decision on any matter raised in the public comment period, which is not specifically listed on the board agenda for this meeting. If you have any handouts to distribute to the board, please hand them to Ms. Holmes, the board secretary, and she will pass them out to the board. With that cautions in mind, we will now be glad to hear general comments. First up is Ms. Lisa Roberts.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Fields, and Cabinet. As I prepare to retire from my position of Director of Employee Services, I've been reflecting on the responsibilities I've carried and that people have made it possible to lead the Employee Services Department effectively. One role I feel especially compelled to advocate for before I go is our Wellness and Leave Specialist. This position may not always be in the front and center, but I can tell you without hesitation, it's one of the most critical roles we have. Our Wellness and Leave Specialist is the one who walks employees through some of the most vulnerable, stressful moments of their lives, whether it's dealing with a serious illness, welcoming a new child, or caring for a loved one. They manage the FMLA and Temporary Disability Leave with empathy, precision, and a deep understanding of the complex legal requirements. That combination of compassion and compliance is not easy to find, and we are extremely lucky to have it. Over the years, I've seen what happens when that kind of support is missing, confusion, delays, legal risk, and worst of all, employees who feel lost or unsupported during a crisis. The role, this role prevents that. It protects our employees and our district. And someone is stepping away, I'm, I want to leave knowing that we're not cutting corners where it matters most. I want to know that our employees will continue to be treated with care and consistency, that we're protecting the integrity of our operations and the heart of our culture. To be supportive of the board's initiative in reducing, reducing the deficit, we as a department brought forth reductions in the grade levels of two of our staff members, one being myself. The position was replaced two grade, two grade levels down, and the Wellness and Leave Specialist was being lowered three grade levels already, and it was already approved. Please reconsider this decision to eliminate this position and reinstate it as a leave specialist. Please don't view this position as expendable, it's not. It's necessary to support our employees and especially our teachers during their time of need, and I say this with a whole heart and the weight of experience behind it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts, and thank you for your service to Judson. Good luck to you in retirement. We really do wish you the best. Next up is Janie Stewart. Is that you? All right, go ahead, Ms. Stewart.
Good evening, board members, Cabinet, and Dr. Fields. My name is Janie Stewart, and until Monday, 5:00 PM, I will be the Wellness and Leave Specialist for Judson ISD. Part of my job is to help guide our employees through the daunting process of applying for family medical leave and TDL, educate them of their rights, and inform our administration of the laws. Employee Services has been working with administration to support our board's request to reduce the deficit. With my decision to leave, the opportunity presented itself to reclassify and downgrade this professional position from a 504 to a 501 Leave Specialist, which the board did approve. When I leave work on Monday, there will be no one to advocate for our employees for job protection, since earlier this week, the decision was made to eliminate the specialist position. This decision directly affects our employees negatively, their federal rights, and their morale. Whenever I assist and guide our over 350-plus employees who apply and are approved every school year for FMLA and TDL, my skills as an advocate and empathetic person are always my driving force. Every time my phone rings, although I know the subject will be about FMLA and job protection, I truly never know what I am going to get on the other end of that line. A woman newly diagnosed with breast cancer, a son whose father is dying and is in hospice care, a mother who is pregnant and having her first child, some of our employees who contact me are going through the happiest time of their lives, and some are experiencing the absolute worst time of their life. But no matter what, vulnerability is a common thread. Often, when the, within the first minute of our conversation, I hear the phrase, "Please help me. I don't want to lose my job because I'm sick." I hear them, I hear our employees, and I advocate for them by performing my job to the best of my abilities. My job is meticulous, detailed, paperwork-heavy, nuanced, time-consuming, and requires compliance with federally mandated timelines, intermittent and full-time leave processing, logs to count, and extensive extensions to rework, medical certifications to review from physicians, work restrictions to review, adjustments made when medical complications occur, advising, adjusting, approving, and so many phone calls and emails. I cannot put into words the true workload of this job. It is a full-time work, it is full-time work that no one else can allocate, be allocated with in addition to their current work requirements. Please advocate for our employees and vote to reinstate the Leave Specialist position. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. And good luck to you, Ms. Stewart. Good luck to you in your next chapter, too. All right, Ms. Diamond, you are up next.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Dr. Fields, and Cabinet. My name is Lori Diamond, and I am the current Employee Services Benefit Specialist. The Employee Services Department is just that. We service and support all Judson ISD employees, from insurance benefits to investment accounts to celebrating new mamas and their baby, and everything in between. Our department is small, but we do big things to support our Judson family. In my 16 years with Judson ISD, I've, I've seen the steady increase in workers' comp claims and FML requests, and we do have paperwork for y'all to see the numbers that have gone up. Let's see, where was I? Oh, as a matter of fact, just today, I processed three injuries, and I also speak with employees who also suffer some of the most devastating events of their lives. When our employees call our office, they know they'll get the care, the understanding, the compassion that their situation deserves. I like to use the name of the movie Hidden Figures to describe our department. We're here, working to support all of our employees day in and day out, but nobody really knows what we do. On the surface, you can see the basics, but what you don't see is all the work that goes behind the words, workers' compensation and FMLA. They are very labor-intensive to ensure timely filing, consist, constant follow-up, and time given to help the employee navigate this new situation they've experienced in their life. Our department has looked at ways we could do our part in reducing the deficit. We requested and was granted by the board reductions in two pay grades, or in pay grades to two of our positions. These two positions are essential parts of the Employee Services Department and our whole district. I humbly ask that you look at the value that the Leave Specialist brings our teachers, our child nutrition workers, and every other employee who is going through a difficult time in their life, and support them so that they can heal and return to their jobs of supporting our students, because we know that's our most important goal. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will have a change of heart and reinstate the Leave Specialist position. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diamond. Next up, Mr. Joshua Ellis.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Josh Ellis, principal at Millers Point Elementary, and wanted to speak tonight about a couple of things. That is, the cuts to a number of our elementary programs, and also cuts to the elementary principal contract days starting the '26-'27 school year. For years and years, elementaries have been asked to do more with less. That's kind of status quo. And now, well, for example, librarians being asked to participate in the specials rotations, a lack of an art program, lack of STEM programs, and now cuts to our pre-K3 program and our enrichment program. I've already lost a very strong teacher due to the indecision about the enrichment program. That teacher is now in Northeast ISD. Now have a pre-K3 teacher that's on the displaced list, also a very strong teacher. If we would put our resources at the elementary level, we would see the impact at the secondary level. But it's always the elementaries that are asked to cut first. It's easier to remediate and easier to intervene with kinder first and second graders than it is ninth and 10th graders. I know that because I taught ninth graders and 10th graders. Over my 20-plus years in education, I've done many things. I've been a substitute teacher. I've been a special education para. Been an English teacher at Judson High School. Been a curriculum specialist here in this building. Been an AP, been an administrator at every level, elementary, middle school, and high school. And I bring all that up to say that I know the importance of every position in our district, and I know how hard the people in a lot of those positions work, because I've done it before. And, but what I found is, there's no position that carries the weight and responsibility that a campus principal does. And that's all principals, not just secondary principals, not just high school principals. Every principal carries that weight and responsibility. And we all need, especially elementary school principals, we need the time to plan, to reflect, and to organize for the next school year, just like high school principals do. And the elementary principal job is no easier than a high school or a middle school principal job. It takes just as much time, and it takes just as much effort. And so I see my time ticking away. But I'll close by saying, looking at the budget in the public hearing, the nickel and diming is getting us nowhere. It's like we're trying to put out a structure fire with a sandpill. We need to find more money, and so all these cuts are doing is hurting our kids and hurting morale.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ellis. All right, next up, Mr. Ian Avery.
My name's Ian Avery, and I'm here today as an employee of the Transportation Department, as well as the parent of a student enrolled in Judson Independent School District, who cares deeply about the district, but I have serious concerns that need to be heard, concerns shared by many who keep the Transportation Department running every day. Our new director was brought to us from Northeast Independent School District. During our first meeting, we were insured that he was now Judson and was not going to make Judson Northeast. Yet a lot of the changes implemented are actually mirroring the Northeast Independent School District. A team member's cancer diagnosis was used against them in summer work assignment because of too many absences despite the FMLA protection. It was eventually corrected because employees took up the fight for her. Longtime employees like Joe Perez and Ticoire were blindsided with changes that they would not be working during the month of July, even though they had worked the last five years in those positions in the summer. No heads up, there was no discussion, just a decision made without regard for how they would get through July and pay their bills. And there were a few tears. Summer rolls can't be taught in a few weeks and take specific aptitude. These jobs take months to learn, but that's being ignored. We have nine brand-new buses that are just sitting because of this and the personal hours that have been cut. Emails go unanswered when it involves something they feel they have already made a decision on. We're made to feel invisible, and like we don't matter, and how dare we question them. After 10 years of working overtime because it was needed and it was frowned upon if we left before 5:00 PM, the overtime was suddenly cut, and we were told, "We're not responsible for your spending habits," by our terminal supervisor, when we expressed how it would hurt. That is insulting to families who depend on that income. Telling us many changes are coming that we won't like by the same person is not leadership. It's warning with no care behind it. No effort has been made to learn our skills, our strengths, or our skill sets. There is no team culture. There are no meetings, and when asked by a department to meet because they were confused about something, they were told, "We don't do meetings." No dialogue, just orders. It's always the little people that seem to get hurt. In short, we deserve better, we work hard, we care, and we're asking for what any professional deserves. Respect, community, and fair treatment. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Avery. Okay, next up is Lillian Hernandez.
Good evening, Judson ISD Board and Dr. Fields. I'm Lillian Hernandez, the secretary at Hopkins Elementary. Never in my 30 years of service have I would feel undervalued. I want to begin by sincerely thanking our superintendent for his transparency and consistent willingness to engage with us. The challenges he has inherited upon stepping into this role as our superintendent were significant, and I recognize that meaningfully change often takes time, sometimes five years or more. As he enters his third year, I encourage the board to continue listening closely to his recommendations so that together, we can make the best decision of our Judson ISD families. I also want to express my appreciation for the superintendent's leadership. He has shown up, supported us, and worked to remain fair and balanced across the district. His recent suggestion that everyone in the JISD family consider giving one or two days seemed made with care and spirit of shared sacrifice. That's why I'm struggling to understand now how that suggestion has now turned into elementary principals, secretaries, and peonies clerks being asked to give up 10 calendar days. This decision doesn't appear to align with the original message of fairness and shared responsibility. I know that each of you serves on this board because you care deeply about our students, our staff, and our schools. Your time and dedication to the district are not taken for granted. Like you, I love what I do, and I'm deeply committed to the success of our students, our staff, and our families. So I ask with respect and sincerity, is there an unspoken message being sent that elementary staff are somehow less valued or less hardworking than those in secondary schools? Because even if that is not the intention, the current plan sends that message loud and clear. Please make this right. We are all part of the same team, and we deserve to be treated as such. Thank you for your time and your service and your continued support to our Judson ISD community.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Willis, are you back up with more? You are, all right. You are up, sir.
On Monday, I was here for that nice, long meeting. It was five and a half hours. And the board heard in closed session a consultant that they had hired, speaking about salary scales, stipends, and jobs for people of classes. You weren't dismissing individuals. You were working with classes of the people. And as I read Ken Paxton's handbook for the Texas Open Meeting Act, I see that that's not how that's supposed to work. And if I could, oops, in 551-074, this is about personnel matters. This section permits executive session deliberations concerning individual officer or employee. Deliberations about a class of employees, such as a golf coach's, there's more than one, peonies clerks, there's more than one. These are classes of people. Deliberations about a class of employees, however, must be held in open session. For example, when a government body discusses salary scales without referring to a specific employee, it must be met in open session. The closed meetings authorized by Section 551.074 may deal only with officers and all employees of government body. Closed deliberations about the selection of an independent contractor are not authorized. It's pretty plain. If you're talking about the classes of people that you're getting rid of their jobs, we as the public get to hear the recommendations and the bona fides of the expert that you brought in, and we get to see the deliberations as to who asked what questions and why. We get to know where you guys are. This is part of your accountability to us as the public. And I was very disappointed that this was all held behind closed doors, as were others that may have been watching. And for once, I made it in less than three minutes. Thank you. Oh, I can say one more thing. Vader, 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 Vader.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Next up is Ms. Deborah Eaton.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, board, Dr. Fields, community, teachers, everyone. How y'all doing? Students, let me tell you something. You only graduate from high school one time. You can graduate from college numerous times. I have three college degrees. But you graduate from high school one time. Don't let anybody take that experience from you. If they call you by another student's name, I'm not talking about mispronouncing your name, but call you by a totally another student's name, you need to correct them. And don't let somebody else turn your graduation into Circus Circus or Circus Olay by throwing around flags and throwing up robes and all the stuff that was going on at a graduation. You need to let them know, "This is my graduation, and that is not what I want to show my children 20 years from now." I have a couple of concerns. Some things were discussed about the student athletics insurance that we pay, $115,000 a year. Parents, you have to understand, by them cutting that insurance, that pushes that straight back to you, wholeheartedly. God forbid your student get hurt on that football field or on the basketball court, either home or away, and now there is no insurance to move them around, no ambulance, no nothing, if you can't afford to get that insurance. So I would give some deep thought to what's going on, because at the same time, a discussion came up to increase coaches' stipend to $300,000. I'm trying to make the math math on that, because that doesn't make sense to me. Without that insurance, they're not going to have enough students to even worry about how many coaches you have and whether or not they need a stipend. Anyway, they getting ready to get a raise from the state if they've been working for three to five years of $2,500. Anything over that is going to be $5,000. And we brought in a consultant to do some things that we had already done, had already discussed, under the disguise of a financial advisor, and the person is not even CPA-qualified, okay? And now, all of a sudden, they're going to slid into some other part of talking to employees and come up with, "Oh, the superintendent is mistreating people because he's demanding excellence from them." That graduation looked like a comedy event. That is unacceptable, and that is not Judson, okay? I don't know what's going on, but we have got to put a stop to this. We are paying somebody by the day an astronomical amount of money, which one of our own board members said, "We don't have to do that," when we could have went to Tazbo, and they would have did it for half the money. And I strongly advise you all to look it up and see how much this person is being paid. It's ridiculous. And by the way, if they put our superintendent on administrative leave, guess what? That person's going to slide in and be the interim superintendent. And they're also working for our law firm, Welsh Gallegos, that we have hired, so that they can come in and do a superintendent search? Come on, y'all. Wake up. I need more parents to come in here and discuss this. Employees, y'all need to discuss this.
Sorry, my mic fell off. Next up, Ms. Kathleen Smith.
Good evening, and I want to thank all of you for allowing me to come and speak to you this fine evening. I've been a school bus driver all over the United States and in other countries for a period of over 28 years. I came to Judson in early 2023. I found it to be a wonderful home, a family of sorts. Earlier this year, I, along with several other staff members, were assigned a route as part, a JECCA route, as part of a two-person team, one assigned AM, one assigned PM, so that in the event one of us wasn't there, the other would cover, and they wouldn't have to take a spare driver from the subpool. I stepped in when my partner, who happens to be Mr. Avery, was injured and had to cover his AM route, yet still driving my PM route. This caused me to work anywhere between 12 and 13 hours per day. Shortly after our new leadership had come into transportation, I was called into the director's office and told that I had too much overtime. Without discussion, my schedule was changed to 8:00 AM, clock in, 5:00 PM, clock out. I was told I would only be contacted to cover routes if approved by the terminal supervisor without a promise of notice. I was, that is not conducive to how transportation needs to run. We need to get these kids to school. If there isn't a driver there, who's going to get them there? And if another driver who has another route has to cover it, then they're going to get home hours late. So I believe that this is poor planning, and it made me feel like I was being punished for stepping up and doing what I was told to do. During a conversation with a coworker and the terminal supervisor that is now in place about these changes, she stated directly to us that it was not her problem or concern if I had come to rely on overtime to live or to survive. That is not only an unprofessional comment, but it was also an inaccurate assumption of why I was working so much. This type of behavior and these unprofessional or inappropriate comments are a frequent occurrence directed at many of us from the new terminal supervisor. It is my professional and personal opinion that the supervisor has no aptitude for the position she's been chosen to fill. She frequently converses about staff members to other staff members and even invokes rifts between individuals. Furthermore, the supervisor has removed access to essential systems without understanding our duties, which directly affect all operations going into the next school year. Neither she nor the director have made meaningful efforts to learn how this department functions, how each department works independently, but also how we rely on interdepartmental communication and program access to effectively and efficiently run the daily operations of transportation.
Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, we've reached your three minutes.
That's fine.
So, yes, if you have more, you're welcome to email us everything you've got.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Ms. Terry Combs.
Good evening, Judson School Board and Dr. Fields and senior staff. I'm Terry Combs, principal at Hopkins Elementary. I've been part of this district for 26 years, started my 27th. I have spent my whole career in this district. I started at 37 years old. Mr. Silverman hired me. It's been a wonderful career. I've been very privileged to have the opportunity to grow and lead in Judson ISD. It's my sincere honor and privilege to speak about two people who have had an immeasurable impact on our school community and myself. Our super- Our superintendent, Dr. Fields, and my supervisor, Dr. Saunders. In a world where leadership often comes with distance, our superintendent and Dr. Saunders have been the exception. They lead with heart, listen with intent, and show up with purpose. What truly sets them apart is not just the title, but the spirit of service and the unwavering commitment to do what's best for kids. Whether it's walking the halls of our schools, joining students in the classroom, greeting to our little ones, or having meaningful conversations with staff and families, Dr. Fields and Dr. Saunders makes it clear, every decision begins and ends with a student in mind. That level of dedication doesn't go unnoticed. It's felt in the culture of trust and respect that they have helped build throughout our district. We often talk about people being personable. But in this case, it's more than just being friendly. It's about being approachable, human, and deeply empathetic. They don't just hear concerns, they truly listen. And that understanding has fostered a sense of unity and shared purpose among all of us, educators, staff, parents, and most importantly, our students. Dr. Fields and Dr. Saunders, Sanders, Saunders, sorry, just don't lead from behind a desk. They lead from the front lines, visiting schools, attending events, supporting teachers, and making sure every child feels seen, heard, and valued. And with tough decisions must be made, as what we're all going through right now, we know they will handle these with integrity, compassion, and a close focus on what's best for students, not just today, but for their future. It's rare to find leaders who balance professionalism with such genuine care. But we have that in Dr. Fields and Dr. Saunders, and we are better for it. Thank you, Dr. Fields and Dr. Saunders, for being a champion for children, a supporter of staff, and a visionary for our schools. Your leadership inspires us all to aim higher and to work together and create the kind of educational community our students truly deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Next up, Ms. Stephanie Miller.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Stephanie Miller, and I work in Transportation Department. I'm speaking not just for myself, but for several of my coworkers who experienced the same situation. Over the past five years, many of us have applied for official postings, positions posted, I'm sorry, within the department. Roles like routing associate, field trip associate, video specialist technician, parts data clerk, and driver trainers. We were interviewed, selected based on our skills and experience, and served as these roles for two to six years. They are not temporary or extra-duty work. They were permanent positions with clearly defined responsibilities. Recently, under new management, we were, oh, can't even say it right. We were removed from these roles without warning, without a meaning, and without any performance reviews. Some received a group message through Remind. Others were called into the office and were told we were being removed to, we were being returned back to drivers or assistant roles. Some, including myself, were told we were now going to be as-needed bases. And yet, I was never needed after that conversation. What's even more confusing is that many of these same positions were posted with the summer, were posted this summer and filled by individuals with little to no experience in these areas. The terminal supervisor reassigned them as summer crew jobs, based on their skills, not based on their skills or knowledge, but based on their attendance. These workers now need training by us, the people that were removed from them, pulling us from our duties and disrupting operations. We were asked if we were returned to our roles. We were told that these would now be rotating positions, split among staffs and groups with reduced hours. We were not part of discussion of the discussion. We were simply informed of the decision. We were also been told the district needs to reduce overtime. We understand that. But many of us worked overtime only because we were covering shortage, helping where needed. Instead of working with us to find solutions, we were made to feel like we did something wrong for showing up and stepping up. The hardest part is not about losing income, it's the lack of respect. Some of us had served this district for decades. Yet, we were dismissed without a conversation. We had no chance to ask questions and no chance to be heard. So tonight, I'm asking the board to please look into how these decisions are being made and how loyal employees are being treated. We deserve honest, fair communication and basic dignity. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next up is, I think it says Toni Kimble or Tori? Toni?
Toni.
Toni Kimble, sorry.
Hello, my name is Toni Kimble. Welcome. I work for transportation as a CDL bus driver. And my concern here is that we have CDL drivers as well as Class C drivers there. And CDL drivers can basically drive whatever they have out there in the yard versus Class C drivers just basically drive the mini vans. But the thing is, is that we are all getting paid the same amount of pay come summertime. Then moving forward in the month of July as transportation helpers, whether you're going to help clean buses, routing helpers, seat covers, whatever it is, you have different pay at this point. So my question is, can the board check into that and give us an answer why these pay raises or pay scales is different? So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kimble. And next up is Mrs. Solis.
Good evening. My name is Ilani Solis Fuller. I am going to be Class of 2026 for Veterans Memorial. I'm a varsity powerlifter, a varsity wrestler. And I want to speak on behalf of powerlifting and cutting the program. Obviously, I don't know how well it does for Judson or Wagner, but I know for veterans, we don't have a big girls' team. And every year, freshman income isn't huge. But our lifters love the sport. Like, of the lifters that we had this past year, me and one other girl were part of another sport. All these other girls don't have another sport. So once this is gone, they don't have anything else to go to. Thing is, it's just about feeling included. We don't, I don't know how the boy powerlifters feel because most of our powerlifters are from football. So they have, they obviously have more sports to go back to. Of the best lifters that we had in the past also had no other sports. One of them was just jumping between sports, but powerlifting was his main thing. He went to college for it, or planned on doing it. And we have one girl that graduated this past year to go to college for powerlifting. I myself was a state qualifier for powerlifting. I only placed six, but most, the equipment that I needed to get through that, like to make it that far, because everybody gets to use equipment in there, was bought with the own money of my own coach. He bought it for me with his own money. The money, we don't get money.
They don't even have a period. The kids who are there do not have a dedicated period. So they're, the 35 kids that are enrolled go before school. Parents have to give rides. We've teamed up to give other kids rides there and back. So if they're there, it's because they want to be there. They're dedicated to be there. Y'all mentioned about having kids feel included, feeling, you know, having something for them. This is it for a lot of the kids. They've only had it four years. I've had three daughters go through veterans. I have a son there now. My oldest was part of the inaugural team. She's been in there the past three years. She was planning on going to UTSA for powerlifting as well. To hear that it's cut for her senior year after putting in three years of work is absurd. We had enough of that with our careers. Our career choices for the kids, those get changed every year. We at least thought we had sports managed, and, you know, that was set in stone, but that being taken away from them. I didn't even know this. My own daughter came running down the stairs to scream to me that powerlifting was taken away. So please reconsider. You know, it doesn't, it's not, you know, it's not a huge thing, but...
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, you're good. You're good. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much for taking listening.
Thank you, Ilani, for speaking. Okay, that concludes all the cards that I had. So now we will move on with the agenda. Items three, A and B, there was a, those are going to be pushed to July. We had one of the presenters was unable to make it tonight. And then we just recently got the huge facilities assessment, and it's a lot of pages. And it's going to take us and you guys along, you know, a minute to go through all of it. And I think we want to give it the due attention it deserves. So I'd ask my colleagues to get through that the month of July. And then, any questions you have, let's get those in. And then we'll do a presentation in July, if that works for you, Dr. Fields.
Yes, ma'am. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to agenda item four then. Consideration of consent items. Let me go down the line and see which items board members would like to pull. Mr. Macias, do you have anything to pull?
The quicker we get to 5A, the happier it'll be.
Okay, you're good. All right. Ms. Jones?
I only have one. C.
Okay, C. C, Charlie. Hi. Ms. Lee? No? Okay, Ms. Canoyer?
No.
Ms. Stanford?
I guess B.
B. Ms. Potteet?
No.
Okay, and I need to pull A for a correction and H for a correction. So we'll go through those two also. All right, so right now, I have pulled A, B, C, and H. Can I get a motion on the remaining consent agenda? Okay, I'll make the motion. It's been a long week for everybody. So I'll make the motion that we approve consent items D, E, F, G, I, J, K, L, M, N, and O. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Ryan, a second by Ms. Potteet. And we will proceed to vote. Okay, motion passes seven to zero. I have pulled item 4A. The board member should have the meeting minutes from the May 8th, May 12th, and May 15th meeting. We're still working on May 21st. We've had some long meetings. And honestly, Ms. Betty Holmes, I'm going to take this as a moment to thank you because someone has to go back and write down every single thing we say during a four to eight-hour meeting. So on behalf of the board, this is, thank you for the heroic effort on your part. So she is still, she is still working. So as we get the minutes done, as we have agendas, we'll continue. We will publish the minutes as quickly as we can humanly get through them for the public. But you can always, always go watch the video. So I am going to move that we approve the minutes from the special meetings held on May 8th and May 12th, and the regular meeting held on May 15th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ryan, second by Ms. Potteet. Any discussion? And we will proceed to vote. Okay, motion passes seven to zero. All right. Item B, consider and take action regarding approving the attached final budget amendments to the budget for the 25 fiscal year. Ms. Stanford, I'll turn that over to you.
Yep, just questioning, it just looks like a lot of adjustments spread out over several different departments. And I just wanted clarification on that.
Yes, ma'am. I will try and make it as simplistic as possible. Whenever you do a budget for a district, you cannot go over what the budgeted amount was. So as you go down here on the first column, what you'll see is what we budgeted or revised budgeted for the year. But then, where it says forecasted, that's what we're actually using. If we went over that amount, now we have to come back and now readjust our revised budget to where we put an amount next to it to where we did not go over. So if you see on CNI staff development where it says 3.8 million, but we went up 600,000, then you'll see where we went to 4.4 million on the amended budget. That way, we submit this, and then there's no violation for going over the budgeted amount with TEA. Does that make sense? It's just an accounting deal.
So we, so we went over a total of 6.7 million?
Now, let Larry come up. No, ma'am, we did not. This is, what we're doing is making a budget accounting adjustment, but we didn't go over that amount. Larry?
I'm just looking at the total.
I know. But we're just doing that to make sure we don't go over the amount. Not that we're going to spend it. It's just that we've only got a couple of days left in June. We want to make sure that when we submit this to the state, it doesn't show that we went over. But Larry, what would you add?
Yes, sir, thank you. So like, again, like Dr. Field said, the important column to look at is the forecasted column, which is the third one. The columns on the right are more for TEA because they don't like us to go past any function budget-wise because that's how they set their budgets when they start their new biennium. So they want us to make sure we don't go over any function. So the final budget amendment is mainly to help TEA when they start their forecasting. They don't like to bust any functions, so to speak. So we have to make sure there's plenty in there. As you know, Dr. Field said, there's one more day left in the fiscal year. So that's our forecasted amount in that third column. So that's the one we'll look at. That's the one that we go by because it's actuals for us. The other side is just kind of a TEA thing that they like us to do to make sure we don't bust functions because that's how they start building their budgets.
So did we go over on any category?
No, no, you can see the forecast.
Yep.
It's accurate, and that's what we think we're going to, we're going to finish with the year because, again, there's only really Monday left in the year, and budgets have been shut down since April.
Keeping in mind that the original budget is what we set at the beginning of the year. But as we've gone through the year, we've made adjustments throughout. That's the forecasted expenses.
Okay.
It's a ledger sheet balance.
It just looked like increases. So I swung to clarify.
We're not going to spend the $6 million, no. We're going to spend what the actual forecast is in that third column.
Okay.
And that, you can see that where it is.
And Ms. Stanford, every year, we do the same thing. We've answered the same question this year. So I get it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Potteet?
Yeah, my questions are similar to Ms. Stanford's here. Again, it does look like you're going over. We have $1 million for transportation. Do you have $500,000 for technology? If you can explain to me why this isn't like brought regularly to the board? Because I thought we did have to approve any expenditures over $50,000. So it feels kind of a bit like we're being a tiny bit blindsided by these adjustments like a day before the budget due here.
No, no, I understand. And like I said, these, there's two 50,000 thresholds. The 50,000 that you're talking about is if we make a single purchase to a person, place, or individual, and that check is going to be over $50,000, we have to have prior approval from you as a board to cut that single check, that one-time purchase that's over 50K. When it goes over this, this is mainly through payroll. And as you know, there was an equity adjustment that we did in the year. There was a raise that we gave the last year, the day we adopted the budget. So these things were not accounted for in the original budget. So we try to put most things into payroll, which 11 function is the biggest one through teachers. But again, when we make these kind of adjustments at the end of the year, mainly it's to cover the functions, but it's not to, they're not single purchases over 50K. They are payroll purchases that accrue through the year, through overtime, through stipends, through equity pay, things like that that happen through the year.
Yeah, it's just like I said, it's a little startling to see adjustments so large. Is that standard? Is that not brought?
It is.
And I'm new, so I don't know. Is this brought to the board throughout the year where we're being informed that, hey, is this, this is going up significantly?
Absolutely. They're part of the financials that we give to the board every month and you can see where we are. We always try to say percentage-wise, this is where we are right now. This is where we were last year. So, you can kind of compare to make sure that the spending is on the same curve as it is before. If there's an anomaly or, or bigger expenditures like we had with the HVAC units last year, we do bring those to the board and say, hey, look, this is our extra expenditures that we weren't planning on that we've had to cover. So, we do your next board.
I'm sorry, because I'm next. I'm, I'm now still confused because we, I asked a lot of questions on this last year. And I thought we were gonna kind of change some of our processes and how we did this because we had some really big adjustments at the end of last year. So, like, for example, in transportation, you know, we were, we were budgeted for six, and I'm just using them as an example because they're the biggest discrepancy on here. So, we budgeted six point seven and as I've been going through the monthly financials, which you know I read every month, um, we were still well under that six point seven. So, but now we're saying we're actually gonna spend, because that forecast column is where you think we're gonna end tomorrow on fiscal year, because the fiscal year is done, so all the checks are written, hopefully, that we're gonna spend a million dollars more than that. How did we not know in February or in April? Because we do budget amendments every month, right? Um, so, like, if we know gas has gone up a dollar a gallon, right? And we know it's gonna be, why are these budget amendments not coming to us throughout the year? Because we didn't have a one million dollar extraordinary expense in the month of June, did we? Like, if an air conditioning broke in maintenance and it was five hundred thousand dollars and you bring us a last-minute five hundred thousand, I completely get that, right? I get that. What was extraordinary that we're now all of a sudden overspent by a million? I guess I don't understand that math.
It, it's not all of a sudden, like I said, these, this is all payroll costs and they, they accrue all year long. It's not that it's been all of a sudden, there's a million dollars that hit in June. They've been hitting all year long. Again, when we start to budget through our software, payroll is generated through the software. We don't budget the payroll ourself. The ba, the payroll is budgeted based on the budgeted positions, whether they're open or occupied. That's how the system generates the, the, um, payroll budget for the, for the district. So, when we do that, we have to go based on what's in the system. So, in the system, there was this much in payroll and this many opening and, and filled positions. So, that's how we build the budget in the beginning. As you know, when equity pay comes and when last-minute raises are given, overtime is there. We try to accrue for that kind of stuff. We can't do that the very beginning of the year. Throughout the years, stuff changes and things change. So, we did look and see what the major differences were and they were all payroll. They weren't this, um, out-of-pocket cost where we have to bring them to the board for approval. They're just appro, they were just payroll costs that were, that were pooled through the system in the very beginning of the year through what was in Skyward in the software based on the, the positions that were available at the time.
Okay, because yeah, my, my concern in, the budget is the allowance, right? It's, we approve what you can spend in every category. And you're not supposed to spend more than that until we give you more in your allowance. So, a, a, I just think it's, have a follow-on conversation about how we can have better visibility as the board and whether that's monthly budget amendments where we're seeing these things coming so that at least the forecast is, matches up with the budget. And I get the, we add a little bit at the end because we don't want to bust our budget because the check clears. That portion of it I get.
Right.
Um, by bumping everything up a smidge. But to actually spend more than we approved, I, I, I still have a, I had a challenge with it last year. I still have a challenge with it. So, I just think, let's talk about some processes so that next year, these budgeted amounts and these forecasted amounts look a little more lined up. And then we're truly just adding a little fluff.
I, I just want to be careful with our wording. Um, not only did we not spend more than was approved, we showed a significant decrease in what was budgeted for the year. I would ask.
Oh, no, just asking, just in one category, like, just in transportation.
But I'm, I, but when you say that, I mean, someone could get the impression that we spent more. When we started off the year, I remember distinctly, we started off at thirty-six million. That night, we gave a million-dollar increase. Over the, the course of the year, we did a seven point three increase because of the self-funded insurance. Another million because we had AC units failing in maintenance, which added up to about forty-five million. And we're going to end the year with a twenty-one million dollar deficit. So, that's in a, a dramatic decrease in what we originally said we were gonna spend. What they're saying is, is that what they originally budgeted for, and they said that it was payroll, that a lot of this was undershot in terms of, um, the equity pay adjustment that we didn't know about at the beginning of the year. Um, some of the stipends that we paid out, more people using them than what we thought. And that's how we went over in some of these areas. I don't, I just don't want to give the impression that we were just willy-nilly out here spending more on stuff without coming back and checking in with the board.
Any other discussion from board members?
Yes.
Just, oh, go ahead. We'll let Mr. Macias, because he went first, then we'll come back to you.
And I just wanted to obviously reinforce that. And so, when we do approve the pay adjustments, we're approving them at that time. So, we do have information that we're approving that later on will be adjusted in the, in the budget forecast and so forth. I just wanted to reinforce that. Thank you, Dr. Fields.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then Ms. Stanford, I'll go back to you for comment or question.
Yeah, just a comment. So, I would note that the difference between the forecasted expenses and the amended budget is two million, not the six point seven, right? And when you look at the, compare the actual totals at the bottom, it's a two million dollar difference.
And the pay equity adjustment was two point one million.
Yeah. So, it's not as big as it looked. Okay.
Okay, Ms. Stanford, do you have a motion on this one then? Since you pulled it?
So, I move that we approve the, let's see, attached fina, final budget amendments to the budget for the twenty-twenty-five fiscal year.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Stanford, second by Ms. Canoyer.
Oops. I gotta clear that name.
Hold on, give me a second. Give me a second. Okay, we can proceed to vote. Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Okay, um, the next one is, uh, consider and take action regarding approving expenditures equal to or greater than fifty thousand. Ms. Jones, you pulled that item? Do you have a question on that one?
Yes, I had a question on the chiller.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering why the funding source was the local and not from a bond.
Oh, excellent question, Ms. Jones. Um, basically, when we, for this particular campus at Hopkins Elementary School, we would have to go back and look at, did we have anything on the bond? And have we completed that, um, list of requirements? If it was with the bond, before we can go out and buy something that wasn't projected in the bond. And, um, with Rolling Meadows and Hopkins, this was not part of the bond. If it were part of the bond, then we could just pay it out of the bond funds. But when it's not, before we can use bond funds to pay this, we have to ensure that we have most of the stuff done before we can just go into bond funds. So, we're using local funds for that. Would you add anything to that, Mr. Brooks?
The only thing I would add is that if, once it's completed, if we do have extra funds, we could always try and come back and reclassify this particular cost if we have, um, unallocated interest or, you know, funds that are left over in the bond. And we could come back and re, reclass this purchase.
And then switch it over and then put the money back in local.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I clarify something with that? So, like, both Hopkins and Rolling Meadows were on the twenty-sixteen bond for upgrades. So, they were at least part of the twenty-sixteen bond. So, if we have one point two million in unallocated interest, at least that's what this month's financials say. And we, we've done this before with that unallocated.
We have.
Why can't that hundred and twenty? Because I think two of these together are one twenty. If those schools were on the bond list, because they were on the twenty-sixteen.
It's not been our practice that, to just automatically use bond funds. We would al, we would always just go ahead and take care of the purchase and then come back and ask for reclassification out of that bond. Because if it's not, if, if that particular purchase wasn't what the public voted on, then we can't do anything outside of what the public had already voted for.
Okay.
So, we would take care of it with local.
Follow-up with Mr. Hall on that one?
Then that's what the plan is. We just want to move ahead and get this done because right now it's hot outside and the AC is going out.
Yeah, lots of air conditionings and lots of maintenance stuff are on these bonds. So, anything we can reallocate over to there and save general fund money that Donald let us do would be great if that's allowed, so. Any other questions on this one? Ms. Jones, would you like to make the motion?
I move that we approve the expenditures equal to or greater than fifty thousand.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I think that was Ms. Jones that had the motion and Ms. Stanford had the second. And we can proceed to vote. Oh, Ms. Lee, more button. There we go. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, I am going down to agenda item eight. Consider and take action regarding approving memorandum of understanding with communities and schools of San Antonio for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This had also been on our Monday agenda, but we tabled it for you to get a little bit more information, so.
And we did, yes, ma'am.
And so, what are we doing with community schools? You want to sum that up?
Yes, ma'am. We were able to clarify with the, um, organization that we could remove the campus that we had spoke about before for that amount of money, still receive the other campus for free.
Okay.
And so, that would just decrease the total charges to what you see here. Yeah, uh, well, I don't know if they downloaded it, but it's a hundred and twenty-four.
Okay, I think they emailed that to us. So, um, that would leave communities and schools at Commerce Elementary, Woodlake Hills Middle School, Candlewood, and Wagner, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, any, oops, hold on, I'm gonna proceed and just somebody wants to push. Okay, any other discussion or questions on that one? I just want to make sure I was, that new, and that new MOU was sent to the board.
Yes, ma'am.
That indicates those four schools. Um, any other discussion before I motion to pass that updated, um, MOU that we were sent? No? Okay, I move that we approve the updated memorandum of understanding with community schools in San, communities in schools of San Antonio for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Ryan, second by Mrs. Potite. And we will proceed to vote.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes seven to zero. We are now done with consent agenda and page one. We are rolling right through. Thank you, everyone.
I don't think.
All right, on to five A, the actual budget. So, um, I think we've, it's the same presentation, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, I guess it's just maybe the CFO to the microphone and you for any trustees who wanted to hold their questions until this portion. Um, let me hit the proceed button so y'all can hit the button if you want to request a speed. So, Laura, you want to hit the button? That way you queue in? Okay, there you go. Oh, of course. All right, so, Ms. Stanford, you are first up. Go ahead.
Right. So, my first question is, do these numbers include everything that has been sunsetted or delayed a year? Because some of the cuts, we weren't gonna express right now this year in the coming school year, but next year. So, do they reflect here?
No, no, anything that's been sunsetted or pushed off to twenty-six, twenty-seven was not included in the reductions.
Okay, so then that'll show up in our next budget.
Right, so if any of these reductions take place during the year, then obviously the expenditures will go down. But no, we did not include that in this part. We just included what we knew for sure, what was a reduction.
Do we have a total on that or can we get one on, on the things that we're delaying?
On the things that were delaying?
Sure, we can get that to in a board memo, absolutely.
The, yeah, so the cut, the things that like don't go into effect till twenty-five, twenty-six?
Yes, ma'am.
That dollar amount, the calculation of that? And then the things that are gonna happen throughout the year ones, what? The eventual savings on the other side. Is that what you're asking for, Laura?
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Um, we could put that together. I, I'd ask for a little bit more discussion from the board because some of the stuff we, we talked about, but we didn't say, okay, in a year, we're, we're cutting. We just said that, you know, the goal would be to get there through attrition on some. Some, it was just for the next year and then we do it. But if we can just get more clarification, then it'll be easier to put that list together.
Yeah, I can help with the motion language to make sure you know which ones we think are on that list, right?
Right. Right.
Yeah, we can, we can, I don't work with you, Laura.
Got it.
Okay, we have to put that in a motion today?
No.
No, no, no. We'll clarify what, what the motion language was that we approved and then get the cost of those.
We're gonna have to go all the way back to the initial, hey, we want thirteen or whatever. And then we're gonna have to go to the five and then we're gonna have to come to what just happened on Monday. And then we'll put all of that together.
In one.
Once we come to an agreement on exactly. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and my other question was, I see on the second page, we've got the new HB2 funding, five point seven million. I assume that includes all the raises for teachers and et cetera, no?
No, it does not. The five point seven is the, with the raise of the basic allotment and the, and the extra allotment cost that were, that's allowed, that was passed in the House Bill two, it's, it's around five point seven. None, none of the raises are including any of these numbers. Because it's more of a pass-through, so it wouldn't be really additional new money to the district because it's going straight to, to staff. So, we didn't want to include that as, um, extra new revenue to the district.
So, that's what I was trying to clarify. If, if that money was coming in, I didn't see it going out.
Correct. That was, the five point seven is the kind of free and clear money that the district gets. That's our discretion to use.
I did not know it was gonna be that high.
Yes, ma'am. And it's not added to what would, but we've offset that through what we project is going to be possibly four point eight for the self-funded insurance because we find ourselves upside down in that area. We just wanted to show it on here and it kind of canceled out almost. But we don't know what the self-funded would be. If it comes in lower, then that'll just be more of a decrease to the deficit and, um, an increase to the fund balance.
So, the possible transfer out of four point eight million is our estimate on that insurance?
It's not even an estimate. It's just us trying to put some numbers to it because we anticipate it coming.
But that's the insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. That's a short form, the self-funded insurance is four point eight.
And Laura, real quick, I wasn't sure if you knew, the, so the five thousand and twenty-five hundred we're getting it for the teachers along with that additional staff is not gonna include the nineteen percent benefits that we have to pay. So, they're gonna give us five thousand dollars for Ms. McKinney, but they are not gonna give us the nineteen percent in our benefits.
No, they are. They are. There's a separate, uh, cost that they'll allow for us to, so we don't deserve that cost either. They, they will find that part for us.
I will have to read updated because that's what every email from every legislative place says.
Yeah, I might even get it too.
I look forward to seeing that template then, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, I guess it is more free money then.
That was our first, that was our first thought too, how much we're gonna have to cover out of the, the free and clear money.
They're gonna send us five thousand plus nineteen percent for Ms. McKinney?
That's, that's correct.
Awesome, all right. Well, I look forward, and we're trying to get that together by July, right? With the new compensation.
I, I think it's gonna be, what we're waiting on right now is more clarification from the state on exactly who's included, who are we talking about? Get a better estimate of what the funds are that's gonna come in. We didn't want to hazard a guess to this. Most districts are just going ahead and passing their budget. And then when we get that clarification, we'll come back and make the amendment.
Okay, yeah, I was just clarifying what's in here.
Yeah, sorry, Ms. Stanford, please continue. I didn't, I'm sorry.
Uh, my last point on this, especially for Mr. Willis's sake, if he's out there. Oh, yeah, well, anyway, um, on the Vader, there's two columns and one says Vader with three point five pennies. And that would put us where we are right now.
That is correct. That would keep us at our current rate of one point three.
Yeah, and then the second column just says Vader with all pennies. So, I just wanted to clarify, that would be to one eleven, correct?
Yes, eight and a half pennies more would put us to one eleven.
To 1.11, which still puts us lower than most surrounding districts.
Yes, that's still, absolutely.
All right, thank you. That's all I had.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mrs. Potteet?
I just had a question on the timing of this material. Is it pretty standard to get it like same day and then we have to review and vote on it? Again, I'm new, so I didn't do this last year. Is this typically what we can expect in the future, or do we normally get a little bit more time to review?
It's always a little more difficult during a legislative session. When the session's not in, then it's, everything's a little more cut and dry. We can get stuff to a little sooner than that, absolutely.
Okay.
But every two years this happens.
Every two years, we have.
Because you don't know, and at the last minute, they say, hey, we're doing this and we're still not done.
Yeah, and like I said, every, it's every two years when we think there's gonna be a change to the basic allotment or change to school funding. We knew that there was a major change coming in, so there was a lot of hurry up and wait moments for us because we had to wait till the state defined and the legislature passed what they were gonna pass. So it's not usually like this. This year, we knew there was gonna be a major, major change to overhaul to school funding, so we had to wait till a lot of stuff was clear to the district. So like I said, I agree, it's a little late, it's a little more angst for us because we can't do much till we, till we know what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
It's, it's a little, it, it seems like this, but since teacher contracts start in September, the state was, knew that if they can get this first, then there would be a little more time to get everything squared away this way. When their new payroll starts in September, everything would be in place. So we'll have all that ready for you by July and everything should be set by September for everybody.
Okay, it's just, it's difficult for me because now I'm gonna vote on this and I've had just the brief presentation that the public had and I didn't get a lot of opportunity to look into it.
I agree. And like I said, again, this is just a framework for a budget. After, after a budget's set, it's all actuals. So everything is how much revenue we're getting in, how much expenditures are gonna be. So, and again, we watch expenditures all year long. We watch personnel all year long. We've taken a more proactive role with Dr. Fields' permission to watch as personnel is coming in before we just hire and replace positions. So we're looking at all that and we do, look at it all year long as well.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Canoyer?
I also want to remind Ms. Potteet that some of this is due to our actions on Monday night. They had to scramble to put all this in and figure it all out and look at what, what we decided on. So some of it's our fault.
And I'll say, I know you and I walked the wall at our strategic planning, or strategic roundtable where we looked at how we do this process, right? And we backed it up a bunch this year, but as we walked the walls of the months, it got backed up even further, right? So I'm hoping this process, there's, we added a lot more things where we're looking at some of these things much more in-depth as we go through the year and making decisions much earlier in the spring, and it won't be legislative next year, next year, so it should be easier, right?
Very.
Type thing to continue to push this back because one day before the end of the fiscal year is not when anybody wants to be making any decisions. And I'll say, just, I am not happy to be passing this budget right now. This is not the budget I want to be passing because this is not the budget that's gonna help Johnson ISD long-term, right? This is a deficit I'm not happy with. It is taking us to a fund balance I am not happy with. But I'm gonna push the yes button because I have confidence and hope that we have started a path where we are looking across the entire district at efficiencies, and I know that's gonna move a lot of people's cheese. But I can at least see a path and a commitment of this board to getting us right-sized. And I don't believe this will end up being the 2526 budget. I don't think it will be. Because I think we're gonna make changes, right? And we're gonna find things, and your whole team is committed to this also.
We've already got things in place now that, and that's what I was gonna say to Ms. Potteet. Ms. Potteet, there's gonna be changes to this going up to September. I mean, we've got, what is it, the property value studies?
There's one more property value study that we're.
That we're anticipating coming. We're gonna see some changes in this. We bump up against this every legislative year. They tell us and, and they have to do their stuff before July 1st, right? Where we turn into this, we can't.
Special session.
Exactly. So I know it's inconvenient, and to your point, I know that we're working in the right direction. I just want to reiterate that we've done the due diligence and we're still working towards looking at all the efficiencies that we can make across the district. I would just ask the board to understand that let's not let the efficiency be the only thing that we do as we move forward in trying to correct this issue. Because there's other ways to bring in revenue as well.
Okay, if I'm reading the order right, I think it's Mr. Macias. Okay, nobody objected, so it's you.
That was a great segue, Dr. Fields. Not only are we, we needing to look at revenue, we're also, we still need to play offense. And, and I say that because I've held several of my own town halls with community members and I will still bring amendments to the budget in July and August that will be specific to putting a certified teacher in ISS and actually allocating resources like a classroom for students to be in ISS. I've heard too much from our teachers that the issue of student discipline is one that weakens the classroom instruction. Even from students, I still remember the young lady that told me, they're making so much distraction, I can't learn. And, and those are challenges that we need to address. So I'm going to look at amending, and I want to tell my colleagues that are new, it's not uncommon. I've done this, we, different members have done this in the past. Last year, we did, I think, a police increase in salary. We do these things because they're important. Right now, I'm not going to mess, because there's so much changes still. You guys are still working on reports. But as a July and even August agenda item, looking at the idea of making that a additional strategy to address the student need and to support our teachers in the classroom, that is how this budget works. It's fluid. There's always going to be adjustments all the time, wouldn't you say, Larry?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it's, it is absolutely a scary time. I will echo the sentiment that Ms. Ryan said about hope. I too have hope, probably not in the same perspective she's thinking, but I'm hopeful that our community will consider in the future a Vader to increase revenue in our district. That way, we don't have to make drastic cuts. Because I can promise you, if we don't put it on the ballot and if we don't vote and it doesn't win, we're gonna have to cut in a manner that is going to be very painful for our community. And we need to talk about how important education is. So I'm looking forward to those real candid conversations. I think they'll be real. But it'll also strengthen the idea that we collectively as a board and as a community have to really make education priority in our community. So there's still so much more to go. Passing this is just, it's part of the process. We have to pass a budget. Nobody likes a deficit budget, but this game's not over. We have a lot more that we can do.
Okay, seeing no other buttons, do I have a motion, do I have a motion on agenda item five A?
I move that we approve the proposed budget for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Let's see, I gave it to Ms. Lee last time. I'm, I'll give it, all right, so motion by Mr. Macias and I'll give it to Ms. Canoyer on this one, on the second. And, oops, hold on, I'm gonna clear us forward. Okay, you can proceed to vote.
Thank you.
Motion passes seven zero. It's one of the most important things a board can do because otherwise we can't pay bills on Monday, so go forth and keep the lights on.
Oh, we're getting ready to start paying bills right now.
All right, agenda item five B. Go ahead, Dr. Fields.
Yes, ma'am. This is for, what you're going to see now that we've passed the budget is a litany of organizations throughout our district that know that they're gonna have purchases coming up starting now. And rather than bring them independently or lose services, and help me if I'm saying this wrong, Larry or Lacy, this particular one is about technology, but then you're going to see maintenance, transportation, child nutrition, and so on. All of these are over $50,000 purchases that we need to start now by paying to where we don't lose services as we move forward. And what we've done is taken the liberty to make a list for each of the board members that's in board book that shows where the funds are going to be paid as we pay out. And this has really done the district a lot of good as we've started this a few years back and we're just continuing to go forward. So this one's for technology.
Okay, so any tech, any questions on the technology list that was under five B?
Not really a question.
Oh, no, go ahead, Ms..
Um, Dr. Gosh, I really love.
Is your microphone on?
Oh.
Is it?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, no, you're good.
Now, when I was like really reviewing everything, it's just, I love your slide. No, because this is like, I don't know, this is like, I wanna see like every breakdown. I might not know like all of them, but you know, at least it kind of like really detailed about like the money, how to like, until like it gets zero. That, that should be like what our bank statements are, so. I just wanna, thank you for doing this.
Yeah, I'd like to second that. This has all the detail.
Like all the details.
That we like to see, especially as new board members, because we don't really know exactly what we're looking at. So having it spelled out for us, trust me, we appreciate it. It helps, it helps us make an informed decision. So thank you so much for that.
Okay, do I have a motion on B?
I move that we approve the technology purchases over $50,000 for the 2025, 2026 school year.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Canoyer, second by Ms. Stanford. Proceed to vote. Oh, I did. Motion passes seven zero. All right, moving on to five C, which is maintenance. Do we have questions on the maintenance list? Go ahead, Ms. Lee.
Okay, just being new because it's not like as detailed as the technology. So I just wanna know, because it says, I know like it says repair services, contract, and then the other one's contract services. So what, it's just, what are those in there? Because it's like 1.4 something.
I can have Mr. Brooks speak to it, but the contracted services can go from the people who put in the filters, the people who work on the HVAC. It's just all the services that we contract out throughout the district for maintenance.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am. And then trash collection.
Yeah, I know, it's just separate from the repair. Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I kind of had a similar, because we're to the point now where we really are looking at every penny, right? I know we are far down in the financial weeds than any of us, you know, eventually hope to be. And it's nice when people ask us questions, we can kind of explain and know a little bit more of where the money goes, right? Somebody wants to know what technology is spending their money on, I can answer, yeah, I'll be like, oh, no, we're, look at all the software, look at all the things that we do. I mean, I'm fine for passing this. Can we get a little more refinement on this, especially with a lot of new board members who may not know what a contracted maintenance is? Can we get a better idea of what that department pays for approximately? So, hey, we spend about $200,000 on changing HVAC filters every year, and we spend about $100,000 on repair parts for the doorknobs, you know, that type of thing. Is that reasonable to get just kind of a list of the 10-ish categories that, that these things cover? Just so we feel like we at least know what goes into, because $1.5 million, that's just a really big bucket, right? And so if it was a slightly smaller little buckets, I think that'd make us a little more warm and fuzzy.
Understood. Going forward, we'll have Dr. Gosh look at all of these. Make sure.
You can phone him.
But we will definitely put more detail. I'm just saying, in the past years, this is what we've been doing.
Correct.
But going forward, we'll be a little bit more detailed.
Yeah, if you guys could put that together next couple of months, you know, some of us, like I roll in with my like reference book for board meetings, so I'm always pulling out, so I like to keep all these documents. So as we go through the year, they all make sense to me. So over the next couple of months, if you could send us some more details, I think some of the newbies would appreciate and understand a little bit better what the movement's.
I'd ask for that same forgiveness as we move through the rest of these.
We are, yes. You'll be able to tell which one, so we probably don't have to point them out to you, right? Okay.
Well, I would guess that under contracted services, if we had a more detailed Dr. Gosh-type list, it would be a whole bunch of contractors.
It would be a whole bunch. Of electrical and plumbing and HVAC.
Yes, what, what I would caution is that we set aside a certain amount of money in that contractor so that when we do have to call the contractor, then they come out to make whatever repairs that need to be made. And so we can't always predict how much that's going to be.
No, it would, nice to know. Historically, we spend a half million dollars a year fixing our air conditioners and we spend about a couple hundred thousand on plumbing. And we know you won't know the name of that contractor because when my HVAC breaks on a Saturday, it's whatever guy picks up the phone, right? So I, I know that that level of detail of who is gonna get the exact dollar amounts will depend on whatever the emergency of the day. I think we're understanding of that, but just understand how much it costs, especially as you go through this facilities assessment. Over the next month, as we're reading it, we read about the ages of schools and things like that, knowing about how much it's costing us to upkeep all of these buildings throughout the year, I think will create a bigger picture for us. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions on maintenance?
Ms. Ryan?
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So later on, we'll be discussing a risk assessment, which is an internal audit request that we approved in April. One of the areas that we'll look at is all the departments so that we can kind of just get a sense of what's happening there. And obviously, I trust our administration is doing their best and their directors and executive directors to make sure that we're being mindful about what we're using our funding for. But that's why we do these risk assessments or these audits, to kind of just also take samples. And, you know, I, there, I will tell you, in the past, I've not looked at maintenance closely because we're looking at the academic sides or we're looking at the more expensive areas. But I will expect our auditor to look at maintenance as well, just to make sure that things are, are doing, we're doing it well and we're not overpaying for contractual services and all of those things. So just wanted to kind of put that as sort of a plug, and that'll go for every department, that there would be some sort of assessment. And when we do get the risk assessment, it'll, it'll look at all the departments. So just a, just a preview of the future discussion, but I wanted to know, let you know, my colleagues, my colleagues, that there will be opportunities for that to be evaluated through that process.
Okay, do I have a motion on five C?
I move that we approve the maintenance department purchases over $50,000 plus for 2025, 2026 fiscal year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Macias, a second by Mrs. Potteet, and you can proceed to vote. Okay, motion passes seven zero. Next agenda item is transportation. Any questions on transportation other than a little more?
Again, I'd ask for that same forgiveness as we go through all of these.
You have questions?
No, just, just the last part that says technology, so that's kind of like different from what.
Oh, so what kind of technology do we have in transportation? I can, I can answer one of them, I think, but I'll let you.
So the, I don't know, he can probably answer better. The technology pieces over there really have to do with the key fobs and the tracking of the students and the, and the tracking software and how they do their routing. It's not an expense that flows through my department, but it does flow through transportation.
And if you could introduce yourself, sir. I'm sorry, I haven't made it over to register my kid for the bus and you're new, so welcome. Would you mind introducing yourself?
Hopefully you won't have to this year. We're gonna try and get online registration, so everyone does have to make it all the way over there, so. But I'm Earl Stewart. I'm the director of transportation. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, board, Dr. Fields, Kevin, staff. But there's actually three, three line items there that we ask you to approve tonight, and one is for repairs. That's, that's everything that goes outside of our shops to be repaired, for every vehicle in the district except for facility maintenance. So if it goes out for bodywork, if it goes out for any, any other type job that we may not be able to get done in the shop in order to get a vehicle back on the road. And most of it is body shop repairs, from accidents to, to whatever it may be. The second line is for parts. This includes all the parts for routine services, filters, oil, you name it. Alternators all the way up to engines and transmissions. So, and then the third one is technology, which is the one you asked about. And we have about five different pieces of, of software that we use to keep transportation running. And this is for those different softwares. TransAct is one of them. That's where we route our buses through and we do our field trips with. Transport is the one where we can track the students on the bus. We can see where they're at. We can actually have the camera systems in the buses. And part of that is the copilot, where kids actually have to use the fob to get on and off the bus. SAMSER is another one. That's in about 44 of our special needs buses, and it's a little different camera system than what we keep in our big buses because the bus isn't quite big enough to, to handle that system. And then we have Facility Tracker, which is what we keep our, our maintenance software in for all of our repairs that we do in-house and actually send out too. So those funds are, are set aside for that. So it's not any single purchase over $50,000, but combined, they will be.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And there's some other things y'all will learn and maybe learn in class. There's some exemptions, so like gasoline. We don't approve gasoline. There's certain things that there is allowed to put gas in the bus, and that's one of the exemptions to the over $50,000 rule. And they will, they will learn as they go through those. So any other questions on transportation?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Ms. Macias.
So just so, whenever I'm looking at financials, Dr. Fields.
Yes, sir.
What I always like to do, look at is, is like year over year. So my anticipation is that since we have new, new buses in our fleet, that we would have less cost for repairs and for parts. But I, based on this information, I, I wouldn't know. So I'll have you just report back on what that trend looks like, because if we're still spending more on repairs and parts and we have new buses in our fleet, that would be concerning. So obviously, I'll wait for you to respond and get some information to the board on that.
Understood. Yes, sir.
And then on top of that, just, there were a lot of people that spoke today for transportation, so I hope, I hope.
I've already gotten those.
You have some conversation.
Yes, sir.
But just obviously, we're talking transportation.
Understood.
If no other questions, Ms. Lee, why don't you make the motion? Oh, come on, you can do it. I move to approve, and then read five D for, for school board trustee schools.
Okay, I move to approve the approval of the transportation department purchases over $50,000.
Yes, ma'am.
For 25.
Oh, for, for 25, 26 school year.
Okay, there is.
Okay, there you go. I got a motion by Ms. Lee, your first motion, yay. Who's the second? Ms. Canoyer with a second. All right, and we can proceed to vote. And motion passes 7-0. Okay, any questions about child nutrition? No questions, can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the child nutrition purchases over $50,000 for the 2025-2026 school year. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Canoyer, second by Mrs. Potite. Hold on, hold on, let me keep proceeding. All right, you can proceed to vote. Motion passes 7-0. Any questions on F, special education? I'll jump in on.
I was going to say, kudos to Dr. Armstead as well for doing what Dr. Gosh did.
Exactly. I will probably be asking questions in the future about, we contract out a lot, right? And so, similar to what we did with the police officers, we examined contracting, saw how much it was, and said, no, we can do some different things to get more in-house people.
Yes, ma'am.
And I feel like it might be that time, right? Because we're spending a lot of money on speech at a very high-dollar amount. So, if there's something that can be done to get more SLPs in, and some cost savings, I have a feeling the difference between contract and in-house pay, that gap may be big enough now where we may need to do some corrections where we can maybe get some in-house, because I'm pretty sure the number of kids getting speech in our district is not going down anytime soon, right? So, I think maybe there are some cost savings there that can be looked at down the road to try and reduce some of those contracted services where it is recurring. We've always had to go out for that type of thing.
I think we're always looking into that, but Dr. Toppin, did you have a response?
No, I think I would just reiterate what Dr. Armstead will say. We're in competition with private companies for those positions.
Yes. So, if we can up ours a little bit, any extra ones we can get in, and any of those categories would be great. So, any other questions on special education?
Otherwise, I will make the motion to approve special education purchases, services over $50,000 for the 25-26 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Ryan, second by Ms. Stanford. If any no other questions, we will proceed to vote. Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to athletics.
Oh, I think.
The question on here is the insurance.
To take off the student insurance, the board already approved to remove that, so that is no longer being requested. Okay, so, I'm going to make the motion on this, and then if there's questions. I move that we approve the athletics department payments to arbiter pay for the 25-26 school year.
Yes, ma'am.
That gives you what you need?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's the only one left on the list. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Ryan, a second by Ms. Stanford. Any questions on that one before we proceed to vote? Arbiters, all the referees, that's how they pay the referees, in case anybody didn't know that. Okay, all right, we're going to proceed to vote on that one. Okay, motion passes 7-0. Moving on to fine arts. Looks like you can go in a little more detail on those contracted, right? Mr. Witt, you can get with Dr. Gosh. Any questions on fine arts? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Lee. You've got a question? Go for it. What is the contracted? Okay. They're going to follow up with us with what those.
It could be from flag, the flag choreography to a host of different things. We'll come back with more detail next time. It's just that, for years, we've kind of submitted it like this. We will, yes, ma'am, we will have the detail next time.
All right, do I have a motion, do I have a motion on fine arts?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Jones. I move to approve the fine arts purchases over $50,000 for the 2025-2026 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, motion by Ms. Jones, second by Ms. Lee. See, you guys are getting the hang of this. We're proud of you. All right, if no other discussion, we will proceed to vote. And the motion passes 7-0. Moving on to 5I, which is federal programs and grants. I know some of these, I think, get a little duplicate where we approve them in more than one place, which is fine, because it's better to be twice approved than not approved, right? So, anything that is paid for out of Ms. Burton's grant funds in that department have been added onto that list in pretty decent detail.
Yes, ma'am.
So, any questions on the purchases from the grant funds? No questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the federal programs and grants contracts over $50,000 for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Canoyer, second by Ms. Stanford, and we can go ahead and vote. All right, motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
All right, we're done with all the over 50s, so, all right, now we'll move on to Mr. Macias. Agenda item 5J is yours. I'll let you explain that one.
I had requested some information from administration regarding more of a retention incentive for our incentives for special ed and bilingual specifically. I know that we are going to have a future discussion on stipends, but I wanted to do a one-time incentive for paraprofessionals and teachers in sped, as well as in bilingual. We ended up during the last fiscal year, having a sign-on bonus, I guess, or sign-on incentive, to be more appropriate, of $3,000. But back then, it left a lot of our current employees feeling a little less valued, and so I made a commitment to work on it from a retention standpoint. We can't pay a $3,000 incentive as a retention. We just don't have the funding for that. But I wanted to pay more of an incentive for our employees that are with us, that are in those departments that are hard to fill. And so I wanted to have that conversation now. And I think, Dr. Fields, you said you would have some projected numbers?
Definitely. I'd ask Ms. Davis and Dr. Taganaw to walk you through it. What we looked at, though, Mr. Macias, is probably cutting for paras and teachers their sign-on in half, and then putting that towards the, you say retention, I think, are we calling it retention? Or are we calling it stipend, or?
What Mr. Macias is talking about is the incentive for retention, not the stipends.
Okay.
So, it's like the one-time payment that we, because right now, the retention incentive for sped and bilingual is not on the comp plan that was approved. What is on there is the sign-on bonus.
Got it. So, we would have to make a change to the compensation plan to bring that part back.
Correct.
So, in taking.
Can Dr. Taganaw remind us real quick? So, what is on there right now in that one little section is sign-on?
Sign-on bonus for special ed and bilingual teachers for $3,000, and sign-on incentive for special ed bilingual aides for $2,000.
Okay. And that's all that is currently, right? That's all that was left in there?
That's all, yes.
Okay, perfect. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew what was currently on it. So, I'll go back to you two, please.
So, I asked them to look into, when we look on sign-ons, if people are already in the positions, then we don't have to worry about paying that going forward, because you're already here. And then if we were to attribute half of that in terms of the retention incentive, that would be for everybody who's still here. I think they were able to get down to kind of what it would be to be able to provide that for bilingual and sped. And can you go over those numbers real quick, Dr. Taganaw?
Yes. Rough estimates.
These are rough estimates. Please don't hold us.
Don't say a million something.
No, 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 but we would propose, or we would, we did the calculation based on what the retention incentive was before we took it off the comp plan, which was $750 for special education bilingual teachers, and $300 for special education bilingual aides. And so, when we calculated that based on the people that we have currently, it would come up to about $325,000, and that would include a portion for benefits as well. And then we would also reduce the sign-on bonus by half, which would make it 15,000. $1,500 for the teachers, special education bilingual, and then $1,000 for the special education bilingual aides. That would be the sign-on bonus, so we would cut that in half. And that would be on top of the stipend that they receive as well, the regular stipend.
So, just so we're clear, I appreciate that rough number. $325 seems possible. But those areas are still hard to fill and maintain, or are we, I just want to make sure there's strategy behind it too.
Yes, they, both of those would be considered hard to fill. We are doing really great right now in processing hires and such. We have, I think now, we've been pushing people through about 35 special education teacher vacancies. We have maybe about, I don't want to lie about the paras. And then, right now, we have five bilingual teacher vacancies. But when we have vacancies, sometimes we hold them, and then we have to put a parrot in them because we can't find a bilingual.
Okay. And obviously, if we were to do this, would we pay the incentive out in December or in May?
The retention incentive, I would say we would pay that out at the end.
In May?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that was perfect. That's all the information I needed, and obviously, it's just the will of my colleagues if we want to support this. I'm comfortable with that. I think it hits an area that's important for trying to maintain personnel in those areas, and we need them. So, I'll just ask for any feedback from my colleagues before I make the motion.
Sorry, Laura, wasn't looking at the screen. Go ahead, sorry.
So, just to clarify, what was the $750 and the $300? No, because that's, the half is $1,500 and $1,000, and that's sign-on.
The $750 is the retention incentive for the special ed bilingual teachers, and then the $300 is the retention incentive for the special education bilingual aides. Harris?
Okay, because I thought we were saying we were going to cut the sign-on bonuses in half and move them to the retention incentives. No?
No, that wasn't, we are going to cut these sign-on in half.
In half.
These are, these monies are coming from our local fund, I believe, and so we're trying to provide some information to Mr. Macias's request, and try to also keep in mind, you know, our budget. So, we're saying to cut the sign-on in half.
Kind of moving the money around, because I'm in favor of rewarding our, these very, very hard-to-fill and very, very hard-working positions. So, I'm in favor of that. I just thought we might, could put a little more to it, but that's up to my colleagues. But I'm in favor of doing something.
And we do still have, they do still have a stipend, and they are still receiving the teacher raises too that are coming through House Bill 2.
Right, right. Okay.
Mrs. Potite?
Yeah, all I'd really like to ask is, again, I'm always in support of supporting our teachers, especially bilingual and sped teachers, because I know those are hard to come by, so we absolutely want to keep them. But as a new board member, and I know I've said that a thousand times tonight, so I apologize, I would appreciate it if we could get this in like a presentation form, just something written, because sometimes it's hard to follow all the numbers. So, if that would be something my colleague, Mr. Macias, would be willing to wait on, I would really appreciate that, just so that we have the numbers sitting right in front of us, and there is no confusion or any kind of, just any confusion.
Ms. Jones?
I was just wondering, is it being proposed that the retention, they would just have to be here for the one school year?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's just a one-time payout, and then it would not continue the next year?
Correct.
Unless we voted for it.
Unless we voted on it again.
Okay.
I think I'm next. That's my own button. I, again, thank you legislature for being slow, because there is, there's a lot of money out there for salary, right? But it's all coded differently right now, and there's teachers that we're still figuring, trying to figure out who's a teacher, and how many years they have, based on definitions. There's the additional staff raise money. We have to figure out how to allocate that within the staff. There's fixed cost allotment. Like, there are a lot of financial unknowns about that pot of money, and how we are going to have to choose to spend it, especially that additional staff raise, because there's categories and there's choices that are going to have to be made on how to allocate that portion that I'm not, I would rather see a comprehensive new compensation plan in July that shows what everybody is getting, and then figuring out how to put these things in, and also gives you an extra month, right? Like, contracts are a little wiggly right now. Like, some people are holding people to contracts, some people are moving around in July. That, we're just seeing that, the nature of that happening, especially with military families, you know, PCS and In-N-Out too, is I'd like to see where we really sit with our special education teachers in paras, to make sure that we are allocating that correctly, see where everybody else ends up in the raises. Because, yeah, I'm very worried about sped. I'm always worried about sped numbers and staffing. It's just the hardest thing to fill. I know we've done really good. Ms. Garza is great about finding bilingual teachers somewhere. I don't know where she's hanging out, but she's finding them. So, we've had a great job finding those. I'd like to see this along with a compensation plan, with all the House Bill 2 stuff and the available money in July, and see kind of where we are HR-wise. That's kind of my thought on it. I'd like to just wait till the next meeting.
So, what I'm hearing then from the board is by July 31st, and I'm speaking to our finance department, to go through the list of the new changes with House Bill 2, and how teachers are going to get compensated, and then be able to come back and say, this is what special ed's going to be compensated. This is what math, science, English, or social studies teachers got to, this is what CTE, and have all those funds added, so they know exactly what they're dealing with in terms of, you know, trying to provide something else.
I want to know if that's reasonable to have a draft by the end of July that we'll be able to do something.
Yes, the teacher compensation is the easy part. It's the support staff that we need a little bit of direction on from the board, as what you want to do for the support staff. I know there's the minimum requirement we have to meet, and they have to use all that money for them, but we need direction on how much you want to do, and how you want to divvy that up, that money up a little bit, as well as anybody else that's not support staff or teaching staff.
And that's going to be more dependent on exactly how much that's going to be, because then you have to kind of divide it out equally, right?
Correct. It's in the $800 to $900, $1,000 range, we're thinking at this point for the support staff. So, and that includes the zero-to-one and two-year teachers. That'll be in that group as well. So, if we get some direction for teachers and then the support staff.
There, we can apply to counselors, librarians, there's a lot of.
Yeah, we'll get the comp plan turned around quickly, as long as we have a little bit of direction. We can give you a couple of scenarios if you like as well. This way, you can make decisions as well.
Okay.
Well, I will add that if we were to wait to, because I'm going to support this anyway, and what we're talking about, what Ms. Ryan is talking about, can still be done, even though we do approve this. So, it doesn't stop that from happening, and we can make strategic adjustments on July 31st.
Based on the information.
Yes, based on, not including if we were to pass this today. But my thing is, I'm okay with waiting till the 31st. I mean, it's urgent, but my only question that I'd like, you know, Dr. Taganaw or Dr. Fields, to clarify, the idea is to tell our paras. Fields to clarify, the idea is to tell our paras and our special ed teachers and bilingual that we're taking this step. I don't want to see them go to Northeast or Northside or SAISD or anywhere else at this point, because everything is late. And so normally, we would have done this incentive back in March and all this kind of stuff in April, but everything has just been behind. So if you can give me some assuredness that waiting till July 31st to reevaluate this again won't potentially hinder their retention, then I would be okay with it. But the idea that I have is that they're going to make choices now, and if we don't take steps in those two critical areas, we may lose their support. So is there any guidance, Dr. Tagnol and Dr. Fields?
I would say this, Mr. Macias, and with all due respect to every teacher that we have in the district, I pray that they select us, because this is where they want to be. I would say that in terms of retention, if a teacher was truly seeking, I mean, we did a lot of stuff in this last week that could make a person want to look. But after the first week of July, then everyone kind of sits steady where they're supposed to be. Now, based on some of the changes we've made, we wouldn't really want to hold someone pat to that, because we changed the game right before. And if they chose to say, hey, I want to go over here, I wouldn't stand in their way if they made a decision like that. So we want to work with the people, with our employees. But I would hope that if you're a special ed teacher and you're still here, you plan to be with us next year. And to Ms. Ryan's point, we haven't done bad with bilingual. But these are highly recruited areas that if people felt like they were getting more to go somewhere else, they may be encouraged to do that. But I can tell you, I don't think it's all about the money. Money's important, but it's not all about the money. So if you're asking me, do I think that in the last week of June, with the cutoff in the first of July, if us passing the retention bonus is going to keep people from finding someplace in the next few days, I think they may have been interested in leaving already. But anytime we can give a retention to a group of teachers, that should encourage them to want to stay with us. I hope I didn't ramble too much on that.
No, I wanted your perspective on that. And we are still going to be looking at stipends in July as well.
Correct, yes.
I have a suggestion.
What do you suggest, Laura?
We might, could consider passing a motion that doesn't have dollar figures in it, just that we agree to consider sign-on, I mean, retention bonuses for these categories pending information that comes to us in July. So that sends the signal you're looking to send, but doesn't commit us to any particular numbers right now?
I appreciate the gesture. I'm going to be committed. I'm going to bring it up, and I'll say to the community that this will still come as a motion. Dr. Fields, I was not hearing anything passionate about you saying we need to do this to retain, so it looks like we can wait till July 31st to make that decision, or before the 31st to add that in as an added value. And then we can look at the other departments as well. So I'll go ahead and pull this, then, and we'll wait till the July meeting to make a decision on how much we want to provide.
I just want to provide the board with the clearest picture as possible of exactly how much the compensation's going to be based on all those changes, before we jump out there.
Well, and for anybody listening, I certainly am committed to putting this on the agenda, making the motion, because I do know we've lost some bilingual teachers to East Central, and we are still in position to lose special ed people, too. So there is a commitment. I will be coming back with this. It'll just be a few more weeks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Macias. We will, Ms. Holmes will make sure that that is on the agenda in July. We'll just push that one forward. Next, we have discussion, possible action to reconsider purchase of furniture for Judson Middle School, third floor. Mrs. Potteet and Mrs. Jones, whoever wants to go first.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring this up again, because that was a point of contention. Like, there was a lot of confusion surrounding what furniture was needed, why we were requesting to purchase new furniture when it seemed like there was already furniture there. And I'm sure, can I have somebody, like, I do have the emails received, but does, Mr. Brooks, can you come up and just kind of explain what exactly they needed? And just basically give us the rundown of where that confusion happened?
If it's okay, I would ask that Ms. Bedford, the principal at the school, come up to let us know what she needs on her campus.
What's she telling?
I don't know. That would have to go to Ms. Ryan. I'm not sure if that's allowed.
I don't have a problem with Ms. Bedford coming up, but I think the agreement was, is that we would go back and look at exactly what was needed. There was a request to purchase a certain amount. We wanted to move forward with that, so we could get the equipment in there prior to the start of school. The board directed us to go back, and we said we wouldn't get anything that we didn't feel like we really needed. So it wasn't like we were going to go with the total amount that we had asked for, but we did go back and look into it, and we found that there are some classrooms that won't have furniture in them. To you guys' point, one of the recommendations was, well, maybe we could just close off the level. But when we spoke to the principal, the principal said that they would like to have the use of the entire facility to be able to use. And then when we really started looking into the exact desk, they did a walk-around and was able to determine that there's like four hundred and thirty desks that have some graffiti on it, that they didn't even feel comfortable that should be there, and they wanted to have replaced. So again, we're not asking for an entire new complement of fifteen rooms, but we did want to have the ability to replace some of the things. And we sent you guys some examples of those pictures. But if there's anything that I left off, I'd ask Ms. Bedford to come up and speak to it, and Mr. Brooks to speak to it as well.
In addition to what Dr. Fields just said, we do have the two hundred and twenty-six desks over in the annex at Park Village, along with fifty-two other student desks. They are serviceable, as far as being able to be used, if we're not going to purchase new furniture. But again, that number of desks will not be enough to provide what we feel is needed on that campus, based on the four hundred and thirty-something that are either broken or have an extensive amount of graffiti on them. Along with that, six teacher desks are needed. We do, well, twelve teacher desks are needed. We do have six over at the annex, so we would need six additional. And then she wanted eleven filing cabinets. We do have filing cabinets over from Kitty Hawk that came over to the annex. So we would have, we would be able to, you know, put filing cabinets over there. But again, it's just a matter of whether or not we want new furniture in there, or if we want the old furniture that's coming from another school with graffiti and whatever else that's on it, so.
So, wait a minute. The furniture that's coming over from all of these other sources, those also are graffitied?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
So it's just the four hundred and, you said, twenty-six, correct?
Correct.
Desks that are already at JMS?
Correct.
That are graffiti and messed up. And also, just to clarify, there was never any need for any science furniture specifically, because in the last meeting, when we discussed this, I was told specifically that science furniture was needed, and without this purchase, we would not be able to hold science classes this upcoming school year.
Oh, then we do need to have Ms. Bedford come up and speak, because she's the one who said we needed the science furniture. So, Dr., or Ms. Bedford?
The science rooms that we're talking about, with JSTEM taking, they're taking their Maker Labs. Maker Labs was different equipment that was set up in the science lab. They're not taking their stools. The science labs are made with the desks that are made for science experiments. Those are staying there. The lab classes, the chairs, those are staying there, so there's not furniture that we need for the science lab. So when the confusion came across that JSTEM was taking the Maker Labs, they are taking the Maker Labs, and those, those big bulky labs that they had the machines reason, the different types of things that we do not use at JMS, but they use at JSTEM. So once those are vacated out the room, we still do have the hard, tall tables that are used in the science lab specifically for the science labs. So there's no additional furniture that's needed in those classrooms.
Thank you.
I wanted to jump to Ms. Jones, because this was your co-agenda item. Did you have anything before I opened the rest of the board?
I just had one question. Looking at how it said four hundred and thirty desks were not appropriate for student use, is it normal to have that amount of desks, I guess vandalized, that need to be removed or broken every year? Or is this like an accumulation of multiple years together?
I think it's been an accumulation of when it was the Gray Campus back in the day. I would tell you that if you were to go to any of the campuses throughout Judson ISD and ask them to do an inventory of desks that they would feel we could replace, we'd probably have a long list of desks that need to... What happens is you just get stuck in, okay, we're going to make it happen, but then when someone shows up and says, hey, how many of these desks would you actually replace if you could? Then they start going through, looking in detail, and you get the pictures that we sent.
Yes, I did.
Yes, ma'am.
Some of them are very creative.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
So next year, we wouldn't be in the same situation with needing this many desks?
Not with Judson.
Okay, okay. Just, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I could piggyback on that. I guess what is, technology has a life cycle management plan, right? Where we are, when things break, we've got a way to replace them. When it's the end of its lifespan, we got a way to replace it. How do we do that with chairs and desks that are not, I mean, some of them might last forever, right? But they're probably not. So what are the desks at Woodlake Hills Middle School, oh, he snuck out, look like? What are the desks at Kirby Middle School look like? What are the desks at Veterans Memorial look like? Oh, welcome out, Mr. Wood. Is, what is, how do we do furniture life cycle management within Judson? Do, at the end of the year, do they go through, get rid of all the old ones? Do we budget so that we buy new furniture every year? Because we don't want it anywhere to get to a place like this, where four hundred of them are bad, so.
So usually what happens is what we recommended when we came to the board and asked for the funds to kind of bring new furniture into. We have bond funds available, so we had found the funds available for this that wasn't coming out of local funds, so this was an opportunity to upgrade. But I would tell you, Ms. Ryan, I was a principal at Wagner for eight years, and I asked that same question after three years, and some of the chairs were being broken. And they said, take it out of your budget. So what we would do is we would take stuff out of our budget as principals to make stuff happen on our campus. So when someone comes in and says, hey, we have a pot of money that you can use to upgrade, then they want to take advantage of that, and they want to get some new stuff, because it's hard as a principal to upgrade all the desks, and you've got twenty-four hundred kids at your campus. So that's something you really have to, you know, if a bond comes through, you use those funds to get that done.
And I guess that's kind of the concern. So like, we're going to hook up JMS, we're going to, great, they're going to have a bunch of new desk types things, but is this, would this be true if I walked in any other school and started looking at desks? In which case, how, what is our big long-term plan to make sure that Wagner gets some more desks, and Veterans gets more desks, and Kinnick gets some more? Just, again, you're not going to have an answer to that today, right?
Only that we're in a unique...
But if we do, for one, we got to have a long-term plan to do something in some way, shape, or form, somehow, for all, if possible. So, and we may have bond money down the road, so put it in the back of the unallocated interest.
Exactly.
Brain priority.
Exactly.
So that, all, because again...
Could that be part of the risk assessment that we're doing?
No.
I don't...
No?
No, we have custodians, amazing custodians in those classrooms every single day, and are clean during the summer, too, to do like an inventory, right?
If any of the principals came back and said, hey, I've got a classroom here where these desks are not functional, they would bring that to Mr. Brooks, and he would jump through hoops to make sure that that got taken care of at campus. We just find ourselves in the situation now, we're dealing with it for Judson Middle, because we're relocating JSTEM.
Yeah. Okay. Other discussion?
Yes.
Oops, sorry, Mr. Macias?
So when this item came up the last time, my biggest contention was that we wouldn't put used furniture where we should be putting new furniture for students in Judson Middle School. And I wanted to kind of hear what this dialogue was looking like, so I don't hear any action to change that, which I'm happy to hear. I do believe our students at Judson Middle School deserve new furniture. But I will say that I've requested and I'm anticipating a very thorough assessment of facilities and usage, because what we will need to do is include in that the life cycle for furniture, for desks. So these questions that are being asked, we have a plan that we can put in future infrastructure bonds to acquire this and not use local dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
But we need to have an idea of how often, so that when you were talking about being a principal, how do I get new furniture? If we know every five years, we need to change out the furniture at multiple campuses, that should be part of the plan. And so when we look at that assessment, facilities, I will probably ask to include that in there, because that's, again, long-range planning we're talking about, and that's obviously something we're all working towards. But I think that will be interesting, but necessary for us to do. Would you concur, Phil?
Oh, yes. Matter of fact, that would be one of the big infrastructure requirements we would ask for going forward, because we've kind of reached that point where some of the buildings have been around for decades. And even at Wagner, I mean, it's time for some new stuff.
Thank you.
And I'm not, I'm not sure I'm here. I heard the same thing out of Mr. Brooks's email that you did, that we have perfectly usable, non-graffiti furniture exists in Judson. It's sitting in warehouses, it's sitting in classrooms. So I'm not hearing that we're buying all new furniture and then just leaving warehouses full of perfectly good furniture. I believe the proposal is to take all the very usable furniture and provide it over there, and then whatever the shortage is in what they need, that you would only purchase what is needed, because what, you declared usable, what is there, right?
And I would ask the question, would you want to put that furniture in the new middle school? Or would you want new furniture in the new middle school? So you want to put the furniture that is serviceable there, or do you want new furniture there?
Well, I guess my concern...
That's the question about equity.
Correct. I don't, if we're going to do new furniture for everyone, then I think Kirby Middle School should get all new furniture, and I think Woodlake Hills should get all new furniture, too, right? Because they're sitting in, they're sitting in desks right now that are not brand-new. So...
And you may have a point.
A student at Judson Middle School gets a perfectly good desk out of the Park Village annex that has been declared usable, and looks the same as every other desk at Judson Middle School. I mean, don't bring bad stuff over there, obviously, right? But you guys check to see, and it is perfectly good desks. So I feel like Woodlake Hills deserves it then, too, and I don't know if we have money for all that, for everybody to get new furniture right now.
Well, Ms. Ryan, the proposal was for Judson Middle School. So it wasn't Kirby, or Woodlake, or any other school. So when it was brought forward, the need is at Judson Middle School. So that's what my contingent is.
Oh, I'm saying, but I guess the need is at every middle school, because everybody has used stuff other than Civilo Creek, right?
And that's why I said we need a plan.
Well, if I could help for clarification purposes, not quite, Ms. Ryan. And to your point, Mr. Macias, we have, how many classrooms? Fifteen? With no furniture in them. Now, we came to the board and asked if we could get new furniture to go into the empty fifteen classrooms. When the board expressed the need for us to go back and see if we could find furniture in other places, we did that. And we have some desks that we found that are at Kitty Hawk, where Kitty Hawk won't need them, because they're getting the new furniture from JSTEM. So we can transfer some of that over. In addition, we found fifty desks over at Park Village in our storage area that we can pull out and use as well, which means if anybody calls us and says, hey, I've got ten desks that I need replaced, we don't have any, because we're just putting them all in Judson Middle. But what we've also identified, and you've seen the pictures, four hundred and thirty desks that don't belong in a school, and we have the funds to be able to replace them. We're just asking for permission to move forward to get those desks to go into the rooms. So it's a mixture. We can use some of the old stuff that's usable, but we would like to be able to go replace some of this stuff that's bad.
And see, Dr. Fields, I completely understand that. My issue with this agenda item was... And see, Dr. Fields, I completely understand that. My issue with this agenda item was we were presented the wrong information. Again, I was told by Dr. Toppin that we had no science furniture. And that's upsetting because we rely on the information that you guys give us.
Mm-hmm.
And I voted no to replacing science furniture. And I had to go and find out by myself. I went to JMS and I met with the principal there and I did the walk-around because I was incredibly confused. So had this been presented this way at the beginning, had I had these pictures, had I had all of this information, had I known that all of it was done, then I would have voted differently. That is my issue with this, is there is discrepancies and it makes it hard to just... And I hate to use this word, but it makes it hard to trust. If I'm being told one thing and then when I go and investigate myself, I'm seeing another, I don't know how that doesn't become an issue of trust.
Well, please allow me to clarify. When we brought this item to the board, it was based on the recommendation of what the campus principals said that they needed. When we were in the board meeting, I believe Mr. Brooks was communicating, Mr. Brooks, with the principal of that campus. And what was communicated was lab furniture, which was misinterpreted as science lab furniture. What she meant was Makerspace Lab, but that got lost in communication. So it wasn't a trust issue. And then even then, at the end, I looked at the board and said, I would ask you just to approve it and I will go back and determine exactly what needs to be purchased. But we won't purchase anything that we don't need to get. So there's no reason to have a lack of trust. When we said upfront, we're not gonna do anything that we don't need to do. We just need this approved so we can move forward if we need to. Because we didn't want to find ourselves in this situation where we've stayed pat and school starts in a month or two.
And I understand that. It's just... I guess it's just a hard pill to swallow. Because I was told two different stories and I know it was a miscommunication. I understand that. But, and at the meeting, you were willing to pull it back. And I did appreciate that. Because there was obviously some discrepancies, but Mr. Macias did push it forward. So I know that not all the blame lays on you for that one. But that is just my concern. I just felt like I needed to get that out there. Because it's hard when all of this is so new for us. And it's hard for us to be told one thing and be told it with a certainty because it was a blanket yes or no question. Will there be science? And I was told no.
Again, the reason why you were given the information that there would be no science is because there was a lack of communication between Makerspace Lab and Science Lab. But I can tell you, Ms. Potite, I've been here quite some time. This is a level I've never seen the board involved in in years. We typically get to just get what we need and we don't get what we don't need. But the amount of desks that we need to replace, the board usually allows us to just make sure that things just keep running. But hey, I apologize for the miscommunication. There's really no reason to have a lack of trust in the administration or the district. We're only trying to do what's best for the students. But I can assure you, what we need right now is the ability to go replace some of these 430 desks with some of the stuff that you guys saw written on here. It's unfortunate that kids have to come in and that's what they were doing.
Do you have a new total?
We hadn't moved forward with anything, Ms. Stanford, because we just wanted to make sure we had clarification before we move forward. Because I promised we wouldn't do anything until we were all in agreement. So if we're ready to move forward with that, we can get some numbers for you before we go.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do they still need this Makerspace Lab stuff?
It's only used by JSTEM and it moved.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay.
Right, Dr. Beck? Okay. That one I knew the answer to. I just have one thing to say that, you know, yeah, the type of business the board is conducting is, looks a little bit different these days because we have never seen a deficit like this. We've never seen a fund balance, at least not in the last decade. We've never seen a fund balance like this. And every penny counts. Every penny, every purchase, everything is gonna get looked at because that's just the nature of the situation that we happen to be in. And I'm glad that, you know, Monday night, a seven-zero vote showed a commitment to doing right, doing right with the finances. So I'm excited about that. So to figure out whether or not there is a motion or anything on the table, so your plan right now...
Ma'am, I have requested to speak.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm sorry. I didn't see that, ma'am. Go ahead.
So at that meeting, what we did is we approved, we made a motion and approved it for Dr. Fields to move ahead with this after he determined how many things needed to be purchased. So there should not need to be any other motion now. We can move ahead with this because he's come back with the information that we asked for.
Okay. I just didn't want there to be a misunderstanding about whether or not you are using the desks that exist in storage or buying all brands, making new of every single thing that is needed. I think we just needed some clarity in your plan.
I'd recommend that we leave those 52 desks that they were talking about at Park Village, leave them there for use and then replace with the ones from Kitty Hawk and new to supplement.
And I would be fine with that. So in case Wagner loses a chair, at least somebody can go drive over and get a chair. I would be fine with that.
That's what we would.
Correct. Yeah, no, I do think you need a few extras in...
We would have done.
We just don't want hundreds. We don't want to move all the Kitty Hawk stuff over to Park Village and then it's overflowing and then we got 300 things at Park Village, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if...
But we will be removing the 430.
Correct. Yes, not to store in a warehouse. They're gonna go somewhere. Bye-bye. Long, far away, right? Okay, just making sure. So, okay, so based on that being the superintendent's plan and what we previously approved, does any board member disagree with that and want to make a motion to the contrary? Hearing none, we are moving on from this agenda item. Thank you. Okay, next, moving on to five new contracts. Five L... Oh, that was mine. Oh, RFP. Um, yes, we, as we're going through lots of financial stuff and everything else, most financial communities recommend rotating auditors every five years. And we've had this one at least eight years. I can only go back to 2016, '17. So we've had them all the way back to even further than that, Larry Sam. So, yeah, we've had the same audit company for well over what is the financial industry's average they recommend for auditors. And, you know, this is a new chapter of finances for Judson and a new set of eyeballs onto our finances, I think would be very, very helpful. So I'm requesting that we go out for RFP. This is about the time we went out, about 30 June, and it takes about a week or so to get back. This is the time that school districts are going out if they want to rebid their contract and then bring back to us the RFPs. And we'll look and see which financial company we want to use to do the annual financial audit this year.
I would only say, point of clarification, if people were gonna do this, they would have done it long before now because the audit starts in July. But to your point, we are ready to move forward with this. I know that Mr. Getta has already talked to some companies to let them know that we may be interested in doing this going forward. The current contract states that we can terminate with the current vendor with a 30-day written notice. We will do that because we're currently under contract. And we will move forward and get this done as quickly as possible. I will remind the board that this audit needs to be done by the end of November or we incur a penalty. So we will move forward on finding someone else and getting him in here to do that as quickly as possible.
Okay. Yeah, and I have faith in the finance team. Ms. Martinez has already done two of these with us, you know, here at Judson and Mr. Garrett was here for part of, or most of last year's one, too. So they know all the prep work and I'm sure you all will have all the books ready as you can. So, and then we should be able to have the RFPs and select down July 31st?
We'll move forward.
That was my question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Dr. Fields, do you feel we have time for that? Because we could continue on the path we're on right now and do the change next year? If that would not make it as tight for us?
We had a long talk today about that. I did come to consensus with the finance team that they felt like we could most likely pull it off. But it's going to be one of the questions that we put out with the RFP. Can we get this done this year prior to drop dead at the end of November? And if we don't get a strong consensus from the firm that comes on, that they can pull that off and get it done, then we would come back to the board. But then at that point, we may have missed a window with the group that we already have right now.
So do you recommend, or would you recommend that we continue forward with what we have now and then look at making a change next year? Would you be more comfortable with that?
I'm gonna defer to Ms. Davis and Mr. Getta on that because I don't want to make the wrong call. I mean, to go the plan that we already have is always the comfortable way. But if the board's interested in going in another way, I am more than happy with trying to make that happen. So, Mr. Getta?
Yes, Ms. Davis. Obviously, the easier path would be to stay where we are and then set it up a little bit later. We'll do whatever the board wants. Again, I've reached out to several audit firms to make sure there's availability if you choose to go that way as a board. Like I said, it's a little tighter, but we can make it happen. I'd say easier, stay where we are and then maybe December, we go out for RFQ, not RFP, but RFQ would be a little easier for us to find the firm we want. But again, we've talked with several firms and told them kind of get their stuff together in case there is an RFQ that comes out that they'll be ready to submit.
But now we have to go back and make sure that they're gonna be available.
So what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is to do what y'all tell me to do. Either way, Ms. Ryan's right. We've been with them several years. Again, it's, is it more convenient for us as a business office? For sure, for sure. It's because we're familiar with those and they're familiar with us, the auditors. But again, if it's time for a change and you deem it's necessary, we'll do whatever it takes to make sure it happens.
Well, I'm just wondering, is it urgent that we change it right now? No? So...
What does the industry recommend, though? What does the industry of financial analysts recommend?
I agree with what you say. Every five years or so, they recommend just changing auditors as good practice.
Yes.
When do they recommend you make that change?
Every five years.
Every five years.
No, I mean, at what time in the year?
Making sure you do it in a efficient...
Are we doing it kind of last minute? Because I don't want us to risk... Is there a reason to be so urgent that we risk running overtime or running into time constraints? Is that necessary?
No, not really. It's not necessary. I didn't know we're up against the fence. If we do make a decision, we'd have to make it again tonight and I know it's up for vote. If you do move forward, we'll move forward immediately with getting it posted in the paper and start reaching out to vendors and get their package ready for submission as soon as we can close it.
And I'll remind us, when we did this last time, we issued the RFP on the 30th of June. So it's not like we normally do this in April. The last time we did this in 2023, we put it in the paper on the 30th of June, accepted proposals, and we approved it at the July meeting. So this is the timeline that we did last time.
Yes.
Okay, do we... Do you want to vote on this? I can't tell where... Go ahead, Ms. Macias.
I have a comment. I'm actually a big advocate for changing our partners. I think it's always important to do that. So I would be open to evaluating this. But I do agree with Ms. Stanford's concern about the urgency. And since it is a process, right, it goes through an evaluation, right, they're ranked. Theoretically, they could be picked as the vendor to do the service for next year. Would I be correct?
Absolutely.
So that's a possibility too. I guess, I guess that's my thought. And I'm with Dr. Fields too. I mean, it's one of those things that, Dan, it won't matter, but we are looking for stability in our processes. And if it means one more year with it and then we do this RFP and have a go effect, you know, it might be better than trying to squeeze something in at the last minute. So I don't know. I'm probably like Dr. Fields. I mean, we could go either way. But I think the advantage is two things. They still have to go through the process. I assume they would bid for the work as well, right?
Absolutely, yes.
So they would bid and based on their qualifications, could still be a strong partner. And of course, the board would then look at your, the procurement's process for approval, right? The board's not involved in it. Like with our financial advisors, we could actually pick our own financial advisors. But only the admin does this, right?
We would bring the recommendation to the board.
Yeah.
After our evaluations.
Okay. Well, I'm comfortable waiting. I'm comfortable with that at the moment.
Okay, so based on the conversations this board has also had about audits in closed session this week, I'm going to move that we direct District to publish a new RFP and seek vendors for the FY 2024-25 annual financial audit and bring back to the board in July.
When you say District, you mean the...
Means you guys, sorry.
No, not you guys.
Sorry, direct superintendent. Sorry, you. Direct the superintendent to go out for RFP. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Ryan, a second by Mrs. Potite.
Ms. Ryan, can you change it to RFQ? Because that allows us to negotiate with...
Aren't you allowed to? We've always done RFP.
Right, but because they're a professional service.
You can do it either way.
We'll base it on qualifications.
And then negotiate price.
Yeah, because RFP, it's the best price basically, but the most qualified is the RFQ. So we would choose that route as a District, as a business office.
Hold on, I'm withdrawing my motion and contemplating on it for a second.
Thank you.
I really like RFQs because they don't have a price next to them. I like RFPs better. But we do want highly qualified people. So, all right, I will make a new motion.
Thank you.
That, to direct the superintendent to publish a RFQ to seek qualified vendors for the fiscal year 2425 Judson ISD annual financial audit and bring back to the board for selection, or back to the board in July.
And I will say, the RFQ allows us to negotiate with the vendor we choose. If we don't like the price, then we move to vendor number two.
Okay, perfect.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Ryan, a second by Mrs. Potite. And we can proceed to vote. Okay, motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Oh, we're on page three. We're making progress. Discussion and possible action regarding 2025, 2026 risk assessment. Mr. Macias, go ahead.
Yes, I know that we approved this back in April. And the risk assessment, and just to remind my colleagues, is where we're going to bring in an internal auditor to look at all of our departments. And they typically evaluate every department by taking an assessment of each one of them to determine potential risk. And then they give us a list of where they feel the highest risk is. And that could be in processes. It's not just a financial audit. It's for processes as well. And so we did pass this in April, but it's June now and then it'll be July and August. And time will go past. And we could actually use this information to also assist in our evaluation of things. And so Gibson Consulting is my, we can actually select a vendor to do this service. So I believe so. It's called...
No, we'd have to go out for RFQ or RFP.
Well, can we? I think we can select.
Yeah, what they had told us, the Audit Committee six months ago, is if we have a specific audit we want done, then we can go for RFP and they can bid on that specific audit. Or if we want an auditor, we would go out for RFQ, rank them, and then pick off qualifications and work out pricing. I don't know if we have a purchasing person.
We've done that as a practice, but I think as professional services, we are permitted to select someone. But, correct me if I'm wrong, things change all the time. So I just need some guidance. I'm happy to go through the process if we need to, but obviously, I'm trying to get this going because we need to.
Ms. Getta, so basically what they're asking is if this is part of the internal audit committee that they have with the board that we've already budgeted for, can they go out then and just select a person that they want to be to get this part done for risk assessment? Or do we have to go through the whole RFP or RFQ process?
Because it's gonna be over $50,000.
Right, but you guys budgeted for two fifty.
Yeah, no, no, what I'm saying is 50 is what kicks in, even on professional services, right?
Right, if we're pretty confident it's gonna be over $50,000, it's best practice to bid it out.
So then bid it out as an RFQ?
Yes, ma'am. We can do RFQs.
We can do RFQ or RFP, either one.
Okay, and I'm not, if that's what needs to happen... Okay, and I'm not, if that's what needs to happen, I'm quite comfortable with that, but I just need this to move, because obviously, time is slipping away. So...
We can get it going.
So I don't know if, are we gonna go into...
Can we convene an audit committee and write up the scope then of the RFQ or RFP and get it over to them to publish and then get it back as quick as we can?
I guess we could. And, but I was gonna say if, are we going into closed session today or not?
We are.
Because I'm wondering if we can, we can call legal to see if we're permitted to. I just feel like we are, and I just want some guidance if we're permitted to pick, because Gibson is going to be the best vendor. We delayed last time, and we hired a company from Washington State. Anyway, we should have hired Gibson, but that's just my two cents on that. But bottom line is, they're the best in Texas right now, in my opinion. So if we just could find out, and I'll be happy to come back and...
Yeah, we can leave that kind of just sit on the table for the rest of the meeting.
Perfect.
And then if we need to come back to it after closed session, we can come back to it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on to end. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Jones, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
It's okay. I was just wondering if Mr. Garrett can come back. Which is better, the RFP or the RFQ for that, if we have to go that route? What's the better one to make sure we get the best firm?
The, well, that being said, with with, if you're looking at the firm, it's who you're most comfortable with. The RFQ is, we like to use that route because it, we examine their qualifications. But if we're looking for the best fit for the district, then RFP, we can award it through through a bid number. Like I said, again, if we don't like what we, when we see when we do the RFP, then we can go to vendor number two. But the request for qualifications is normally if it's, we're gonna look at what they're, who's the best qualified. If that's the route the board wants to go, then the RFQ is the best way to go.
Okay. Did I miss anybody else on that one? Okay. All right. Five and discussion and action regarding delegate and an alternate for the 2025 Tassie Tasby Texas ASCON Assembly. So I think hopefully all the newbies saw the the explanation in there. So when we go to our annual conference, the Texas Association of School Board gets together, and they vote on certain things and write legislative agendas. So we select one board member to be our primary and one to be our delegate, and they get to go to the delegate assembly and with a whole bunch of other board members from across the state and and vote on behalf of Judson and do the work that that Tasby does with them. So is someone, did that, anything look interesting in that pocket that anyone would like to do it? Who has done it before? No, Suzanne, I know you've done it, right?
Yes, I did it. Jose and Laura did it last year. It's your turn, ma'am.
It's my turn, all right. I tried to get out of last year because I really like to go to the sessions, but...
As do we all.
Yes, so I don't mind.
That's why we're volunteering.
Which is why we take turns.
I know, so...
I've done it three times.
Any of the new personnel interested in in serving as the primary, I'll give it up, I promise, or or being my alternate. Somebody's gotta be the alternate. You could be the alternate. You could be the alternate. So, all right, is everyone fine with me being the primary and Mrs. Potite being the alternate?
Absolutely.
Okay, because guess who's gonna be on the line next year? Y'all just get ready down there, so...
I move that we approve Ms. Ryan as the delegate and Ms. Potite as the alternate for the Tasby Delegate Assembly.
Second. A motion by Ms. Canoyer, a second by Ms. Stanford. Do we want to discuss? I'm just gonna vote, no. I'm just kidding. I'm not gonna vote, no. Proceed to vote. All right, Laura, push the button again. There we go. Motion passes seven to zero, and I will be proud to represent Judson ISD at the Tassie Tasby Conference in September. So then, next up, so what's gonna hap, on, I'm sorry, agenda item O, one of the things the delegate assembly, I guess me, will vote on is our representation. So there's board directors at Tassie Tasby, and there are big members like at the top, and then each of the regional service centers has a number of members. So one of the region 20 positions is up this year. And so what boards can do is log their their endorsement of a candidate, and then at Delegate Assembly, you will see the endorsements, and people will vote on them. So there were two personnel that have applied for the region 20 position, which were, I didn't flip, which was Mr. Luna and Mr. Serna. Actually, if anyone, who was at, y'all met Mr. Luna, actually, at the convention.
Yes, we did.
He came and talked to us that he was running, and he is at Harlandale, and then Mr. Serna is up at Bernie. So any other discussion of those those people before, I guess somebody makes a motion or not a motion, you don't have to endorse somebody, but... I was impressed that Mr. Luna came and was really trying to engage with school board members from our region, seemed to be seeking out people. He also came to the Bear County School Board Coalition meeting also and was talking to many school board members, and I like that kind of presence out in the community, because we have a lot to learn from our fellow school board members. So I would like to move that...
Hold on, before you make the motion. Do we have to pick one? We can't pick both?
No, you would have to endorse one, because there's only one slot open.
I know them both, and they're both fine people.
I know, I know. And you can abstain, that's okay, too. Like, if you don't want to, it's, it's one of those weird things, you know, type thing. So so I'm in a motion that we...
Can I speak for just a second, please?
Yes, you can, sorry.
Mr. Sina has been been in the position for about a year and a half. It hasn't been that long. He took over after Rolanda Schmidt moved up to to... But what I'm gonna say is, our district has more in common with Mr. Luna's district, and so for that reason, that's the person that I personally feel might be a better fit for us.
Because Tasby does, you know, those, once they're on the board, they are doing a lot of advocacy, and so someone who is advocating for things that our district looks like his district and helps helps advocate for our kids, I think would be helpful, too. So now I'm gonna make the motion that the Judson ISD Board of Trustees endorse, I forgot his last first name, I'm sorry, Louis Luna, for the region 20 Board of Directors position.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Ryan, a second by Ms. Potite, and we can proceed to vote. All right, motion passes seven to zero. Oh my gosh, did we get to the end? We got to the end. Kind of. Okay, so now update on board, training, conferences, events, board committee updates. Mr. Macias, what do you got?
At the point, at this point, nothing.
Oh, you went to a conference?
Okay, okay. You're forcing me to talk. No, actually, I was, I was not paying attention, Ms. Ryan.
Sorry, we're on conferences, sorry.
Yeah, so now I gotta talk. Okay, yes, we did go to Systems of Great Schools.
Yes, sir.
Which was a very good conference, very insightful, very innovative, and of course, Dr. Fields and the administration was acknowledged for their work with with the organization. It was really just interesting to see all the districts there. If I could pick one district that I thought was interesting, it was Houston ISD was there. Obviously, it's a whole different world for them right now, but just looking at their practices, and they did have schools that went from F to A in in one year. So there is definitely some good practice and innovative initiatives within that, so I'm glad that we're part of that and that we're doing our best to continue those collaborations. So I think, obviously, SLI was, as I always say, it's off off the charts. I will be honest with my community. I go there to have a lot of conversations, 15 years' worth. Sessions get a little boring, so, but it's about the conversations with individuals across Texas, and again, just reaffirming the same issues that we're all experiencing. And it's like, everyone understands. We're in a community that everyone understands what those challenges are, and they have unlimited coffee, so I'm happy about that. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jones, how was your new training? And what would you like to share?
So I did attend the Summer Leadership Institute. That was the Texas Trustee Institute. It was a two-day training for new trustees. It was very intensive. Then I was able to attend a session with a man named Seb Terry. If you can look him up, he is amazing. He had just a lot of great insight, and it was just a very inspirational session. I also, we got our Open Meetings Act training. Prior to that, I did just want to throw out that I was able to go to the kindergarten graduation at Candlewood, and I wanted to just give a special recognition to Mr. Passata, the music teacher. He did amazing with these kindergarten students. They had choreography, they memorized the words. It was wonderful. It was just great. Then I was able to go to the iPlay Awards that they had at Hopkins, where they were actually awarded the HEB Tournament of Champions, their third year in a row. Coach Joe Cuellar was actually awarded there the Judson Athletics Coach of the Year. Truly deserving for him. He's an amazing coach. Then they also had a Hopkins UIL Award Ceremony, where their number sense team got the championship title in the district. And so special recognition for Mrs. Navotny and Ms. Winrow, who cheered that up there at Hopkins.
All right, Ms. Lee.
Oh, just to piggyback, it's just a training that we attended, too, and it is really a lot of learning, but also to be like out of the, out of like my bubble with that group that I met with a lot of like different districts. So it, the, it did help me like to understand more like insights of different experiences of different district, like, because there's like, like, like two of them from from Dallas area, and then I did met the one from, I believe, Northeast ISD. And then the one from a little district, she said, from Van Horn, I believe. So it was kind of like nice to be like, you know, get to know some of the experiences that they had, but yeah, that's all I have.
All right, Ms. Canoyer.
I feel like all I've done is gone to board meetings. But looking back on my calendar, I do want to highlight just a couple of things that I attended. And I don't know if I mentioned it in May or not, but the Wagner High School Block Party that they had, amazing, amazing. Mr. RC, you and your staff, thank you so much. Karen Wagner's sister was at the event, and I spoke with her, and just everybody was having a great time, so thank you for that hard work. The Circle of Excellence for our students who are the top 10 students, truly a great event. The JLA banquet, where we honored our JLA graduates. The golf tournament for the Judson Education Foundation, always a highlight. It's hotter than heck, but boy, did we have a good time. And then we did our Jeff Strategic Planning, which I think we're really making amazing strides moving forward and growing the leadership and increasing the donor base so that we can continue to do amazing things for the students and staff.
Ms. Stanford?
Michael Bosh.
Sure. Ms. Potite?
I also attended the SLI, the Summer Leadership Institute, and it was great. A lot of information was thrown at us. I think the, kept on being told that we were just being inundated with information, trying to drink from a fire hose. It was a lot. So we sat in a conference room for two days, just freezing to death, because I don't know what was wrong with our AC, but it was negative 20 in that room. But made a lot of great contacts with new board members who are in the exact same situations that the three of us are in, so got a lot of new phone numbers, just to bounce off some good ideas, bad ideas, just to see where everybody else is kind of sitting. So that was really exciting. I also went to the Volunteer and Substitute Teacher of the Year Awards, and I just want to give a shout out to those people because they are so instrumental in helping with the kids, and I'm always, always thrilled to find another parent who as, who is super involved with their school, because as most of you probably know, or maybe not, not sure, that's how I got my start. I was the PTO president at Crestview. I'm on the campus all the time. I loved being there, and it's just great to be around like-minded people and see that passion for their students in these schools and the fact that they just want to get out there and help. And with our substitutes, they're out there every day, just taking care of our students, and we, I just cannot push them up enough. So that's pretty much what I did for the past month, and attend board meetings, lots and lots of board meetings.
Were you ready yet, Laura, or no?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Suzanne, for reminding me. I don't even know what month we're in right now, so I guess May was part of the last 30 days. So yeah, there were just, thank you to the whole staff and every campus, everywhere across the district, because all everyone was doing was ceremonies to recognize kids and staff everywhere. Substitute breakfast, National Honor Society deductions, it was inductions. It was literally just one end to the other that we couldn't even list, and I'm so glad so many of our board members got out, right? We were just trying to be at whatever we can, and we got to see these little pockets, and that was amazing. Thanks to everyone for the graduations. I know how hard those are to put together. They are all-day events, so to the counselors who are scrubbing names and people putting out flowers and everyone from district staff and the high schools, thank you that it was an amazing day to watch those kids walk across the stage, and such a big deal for them. Went to SLI, just some great motivational speakers, a lot of networking, and a lot of great sessions on finance were going on all over SLI, so lots of learning going on. And we're excited that we are, the Board Officer Institute that we would normally get pulled out of the next conference for, that Esperanza from Hays ISD is is doing an online version of it and free coaching session session. So myself, Mrs. Potite, and Mrs. Lee, as the three board officers, we're gonna knock out all of that this summer, online Zoom sessions and personal coaching sessions with her, and get all that training done so we can really enjoy then Texas ASCON and be able to go to as many sessions as we can. But those are the big trainings we have coming up, but just thank you to everybody. It's been a long 30 days, which is, thanks. There's no other words to say. So, all right, Laura?
Went to all the graduations, so congratulations to all the graduates. The exciting, exciting time. And also went to SLI, always learn something. I do at at the courses, and I went to one course, which was, guess what, about setting higher goals for students. So I'm going to buy the books that they recommended and gift them to you, Dr. Fields, and the staff, and you'll be getting those soon. But I'm gonna get one for myself, too. It looked like an amazing book, and they were very excited about the whole concept, so I am excited about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Also attended this week the ELA bilingual performance by Ms. Bonnie Anderson. Does this every year. It's an incredible coming together of the community to celebrate all the kids and their performances, and they make it a potluck. They all come, Maria, back there, got to see you there. They come together and and not only watch the kids, and it was a big, big turnout, watch the kids, and then they they eat dinner together, eat lunch together. So that was incredible. And so the reason I wanted to go last is I had an item that would fall under board norms, and I just wanted to make a suggestion to the board and kind of get board consensus on, this week on Tuesday, we almost voted on a document that had actually been altered from the original document, so that there was a confusion there. So I just want to request going forward that any document that's presented for review or vote to the board that has had any changes made to it from the original document, that those changes be clearly noted, and I want to see if the board would agree to that.
Well, I think that's kind of, Mrs. Potite kind of addressed that also. You know, when I look down at my phone and the slides for, at 5:08, I get the slides for tonight, well, I'm already here and nowhere near a printer. We already have in our thing that we, we're supposed to lock it down 72 hours in advance, and I think, and we talked about this when we went through it with Dr. Gibson, too, which is, and I know budget's weird, but if we can make a better... is, and I know budget's weird, but if we can make a better commitment to all documents being in board books 72 hours out so that everyone does know what they're voting on, right?
But these changes were made by board members, though, not by admin.
Well, the document was provided, it just wasn't put in board books. So, yeah, no, I think everyone does need to know what they're voting on. I 100% agree.
So I'm just asking that, apparently there was some consideration and some changes were made based on what made sense to the presenters of the agenda item. I'm good with that. I just need to know what they are. So they, to me, needed to be highlighted so that we could see what was being maybe suggested.
Yeah.
Over and above the TASB recommendations so that we knew what had been changed. So that's been tabled, I'm glad for that. Just wanted to make the suggestion going forward.
Yeah, and we'll talk, at agenda reviews, let's just make sure we know like what documents are still outstanding and make commitments to having those by preferably Friday, no later than the 72-hour mark. Otherwise, make maybe some hard decisions that we can't, that we got to pull an agenda item, or it's emergent and, and then we make accommodations in some way, shape, or form. So yeah, I think it's, it's been hard with all the meetings to make sure that documents get in, they're accurate, we have them 72 hours out to review, like the budget.
I, I would say that we tried really hard this week to get all of the documents in on time. It's just that there were so many meetings happening so quick. And it was a lot.
I'm not talking about the documents you provide.
Are you saying there was an error on a spreadsheet?
No, not in.
Laura, you're making a big deal, but I'm just trying to see where you're going with this.
There's not, remember, we had to change, we had to change the numbers. We had six numbers that had been altered or changed.
Laura, choose your words carefully. So I made a proposal, actually, three of the board members who are sitting here put together a proposal of what they wanted the stipends to be. Then there was some consensus to find some middle ground to lower some of those. So there was a change to what the three board members had proposed. And I know I was willing to make compromise and lower their dollar amounts. So nothing was altered or changed. The proposal from three of these board members is what the proposal was. We just agreed on the dais to lower a few of those based on Ms. Davis's recommendations.
Well, it was the TASB recommendations.
Correct. That wasn't what the three board members who submitted the agenda items desire was.
But you didn't state that that was your desire. What you said was this came from TASB. And it wasn't clear that you had made changes to what TASB recommended.
Correct.
And that's what she's saying. That was not clear.
I totally good with board members saying, you know.
And that you added some things.
We think these should be higher, or we think this should be considered in this different way. Good with that.
Yeah.
But I didn't know the difference between what we were looking at that TASB recommended and what we were looking at that some board members decided might be better. And I'm happy to consider what might be better.
Right, yeah, to mark an average.
But I need to know that that's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. And I think, yeah, getting everything, all documents, everybody gets a chance to look and pull stuff up will definitely help everybody in the future. So, okay. The board will now adjourn into closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meeting Act. Section 551-074, Discussing Personnel, Personal Report and Updates Including New Hires, Resignations, and Administrative Appointments pursuant to Section 551-074, Consider and Discuss Board Member Duties, Roles, and Responsibilities, and 551-074, Consider and Discuss Superintendent Duties, Roles, and Responsibilities. The time is now 9:09, and we will head to the other room.
I think, I don't know.
I don't know.
Oh, the board will now reconvene in open session. The time is 9:43 PM. No final action decision or vote was taken while the board was in closed session. Um, Gen. Item 8A, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the personnel report and updates as presented in closed session. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Canoia, second by Mrs. Potite. We will proceed to vote. Motion passes 7-0. There being no for--
Hold on.
Oh.
There is further action.
Man, I'm so close.
So, um, I did look up the rules. It recommends we do an RFP or RFQ for the internal auditor.
Okay.
So, I'd like to move forward with that. Again, we've already approved it, so just basically let the administration know that we have a request for RFP. It's just a risk assessment.
Yeah.
So, there's really not a lot of scope of work.
Okay.
It's, risk assessment is you're evaluating every department.
Okay.
But the internal audit committee will share some emails--
Okay.
And then we'll give the information to administration so they can put RFQs together.
Put it out, and then as soon as they come back, we'll take a look at it as committee.
Yeah.
And then we'll bring it back to the full board then to look at the proposal and then vote on the--
Well, I don't know if we need to, because we already approved it. We just need to start the RFQ. And so, what I've asked today is that we start the RFQ.
Oh, correct. No, I'm saying before we go sign the contract, the board has to approve the actual contract. Right? Yes. After, we have to, RFQ, we have to approve the RFQ.
After our selection. Correct.
Correct. After selection.
We're gonna just go ahead and move forward. Mr. Macias put it together, and then we'll bring it back to the board. Most likely by the end of July. Well, I don't know if we can pull it off in three weeks, but--
I think we have an old one in the system that we did some point. Somebody can probably find the old one. I mean, it may be 10 years old, but it may be similar, because we have done this before. So, okay, perfect. So, M will come back hopefully with some actual choices then. All right. Hearing no other business, we are adjourned at 9:45. Hearing no other business, we are adjourned at 9:45 PM.